Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Milton School Committee meeting for December 18th, 2024. We will call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So in terms of approving our agenda for this evening, before we get started, does anyone have any changes? Or things to remove from the agenda? All right. Then we can approve that and move into public comment, which is the portion of our meeting where we welcome members of the community to... Oh, I'm like, it's, sorry. There was just a noise in the hallway. Members of the community to come and share their perspectives with us. And we can do this both in person and virtually. So is there anybody here in person to participate in public comment this evening? Is there anybody online if you would like to participate in public comment? Can you please raise your hand at this time? Okay. So it looks like we have an attendee on Zoom who will participate in public comment. Please keep your remarks to three minutes. And before you begin, just introduce yourself by name and local address, please. You'll be...
Sure. Yeah, my name is Ron Chikini. I'm at 26 Cushing Road. So, good evening, members of the school committee. I am speaking to, again, express my profound disappointment and frustration with how the removal of Columbus Day from the school calendar was handled, and it continues to be ignored.
Sorry, excuse me.
Yes?
Mr. Chikini, we can't quite hear you. Can you hold on a moment, please, so we make sure to adjust the volume?
Try it again.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
It's still a little faint. Hold on one moment, sorry.
Try again.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Yep. That's, that's great. Okay, sorry to make you start over, but can you please...
Sure, Ron Chikini, Cushing Road. And so I was, I was saying, I was, I was calling in to express my profound disappointment and frustration with how the removal of Columbus Day from the school calendar was handled a few years ago, and it continues to be ignored. A few years ago, Columbus Day was removed without any community input. I brought this concern to one of your subcommittees a couple of years ago, and it was acknowledged that the decision was poorly handled and would be revisited. That was two years ago, and since then, I have not, there's been no action on it. But most recently, when you put out your survey, I was kind of hopeful that this could be addressed. I realized that the survey was about religious holidays being added to the calendar and what the community thought on that. But there was a form for submitting comments, and I know myself and I think some others, you know, expressed our desire to restore Columbus Day. And so I was hoping that there'd be a discussion about that. But then, you know, there was no mention of it at all at the most recent school committee. And so it seems like it's just going to be ignored. And it seems like it's a deliberate omission. And to me, it speaks volumes. And so I just wanted to remind the school committee that Columbus Day is both a federal holiday and a Massachusetts state holiday. But more importantly, Columbus Day was created to honor the contributions of Italian Americans, which was an immigrant group that endures significant discrimination in this country. And so replacing it with Indigenous Peoples' Day, without even creating an alternative like an Italian Heritage Day, in my mind, not only erases Italian Americans, but also sends a harmful message of exclusion. This is not really what, this is really not about what anyone thinks about Columbus himself. It's about respecting a day that recognizes the struggles and achievements of Italian Americans, and by extension, all immigrants. The decision to remove Columbus Day without meaningful input and to ignore it, despite promises to revisit the matter, is betrayal of trust. And so I urge this committee to honor your word, engage in genuine community dialogue, and restore a day that celebrates Italian-American heritage or provide a meaningful alternative. Failing to do so perpetuates harm and discrimination, and in my mind, is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we will be, obviously, having the continued discussion a little bit later in our agenda. And if members have, you know, thoughts about what was just raised, then we'll have the opportunity to incorporate that into the discussion. Is there anybody else wishing to participate in public comment online? I do not see any more hands raised. So we will proceed into our next agenda item.
Do Marcus have to get?
Thank you. So the next agenda item is the superintendent's report.
Great. Good evening, or good morning. A couple of things to share. One, I mentioned our Assistant Superintendent Screening Committee was beginning, and Amanda has joined the screening committee. Thank you so much. I wanted to give Dr. Watts just a moment to share kind of the kickoff last night. And it's going to be happening quickly. So it'd be great to hear kind of, for everyone, kind of the energy in the room, so to speak.
Yeah, we actually had a pretty robust... We had a robust meeting last night of discussion about characteristics of the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning that we are looking for as a committee. The posting will close on January 2nd, at which time the committee members will have an opportunity to screen the resumes and applications of all of the candidates who have applied. We are anticipating a large number of candidates, and so far, the early submissions have been very hopeful and lots of talent. So that's really nice. We have begun also the process of determining some questions that would be appropriate and the format by which we will move forward. We will begin interviews shortly after the second week in January, I believe, at which point we will interview the candidates that we feel are appropriate and begin that selection process. And then they will have a second round. So overall, we're on the road.
Awesome. Thank you. The second thing I want to mention is question two. So that was MCAS no longer being a graduation requirement. There was a, we've been getting a lot of FAQs from DESI. We've been talking about it in both at the local level, regional level, et cetera, to try to figure out. I think DESI also has been in the same kind of process of trying to determine how are we going to, what kind of guidance are we giving? Because in some ways, the repeal of MCAS as a graduation requirement put everything into local districts as opposed to being guided by DESI. We had a webinar today that I think Mark also attended right in the room next to me. I didn't realize he was, he was in the same meeting. But we, I think it was, it was a really helpful webinar in starting to hone in on what are the kinds of things we're going to need to be doing, I think, both at the high school. And so Karen Cahill, our principal, who's here tonight, I'll be working with directly to, to kind of work through and talk through how we want to provide evidence of mastery for students meeting standards. The, the, the requirement for graduation still remains local graduation requirements and the competency determination. We have to determine locally how, how our local graduation requirements are meeting that need in the competency determination. So there, there's work that we need to do to either look at our current requirements and create a crosswalk to the competency determination or some other way. There were questions from people in attendance about, can we use the MCAS as, at a local level? So not at the state level as a, as a grad requirement, but as a local level to, to, you know, events mastery. And the DESI guidance was, yes, you could if you wanted to. But they set to check with legal counsel on that. So I'm not sure if that's been fully vetted. So I think there were a lot of questions for, for people to say, like, what, what, how, how, what guidance do you have? And they were kind of saying, it's on you. Like, we're not going to, we're not going to give you direct guidance to say, this is what it, you need to build, or this is what it should look like. It's, it's on you. Oh. So, so I am meeting, I know I've got a meeting coming back from break with area superintendents. Area meaning like 25 districts. And our main focus is going to be bringing our initial draft thinking. It will probably mean, one of the suggestions in this from DESI is to develop a policy. So there's clarity, and I think that makes sense. Whether that becomes part of our graduation policy or a separate policy, I think there'd probably be an amendment to our current graduation policy. So there's more to come on that.
We have a mouse speaker.
Okay. We have a visitor that we didn't know was going to appear. Thank you. So this will be a topic in, in coming meetings, I think, as we kind of go into higher and figure out what this looks like.
So then would you work with area superintendents to come up with something that they would all then use?
Yeah. I mean, I think though they're, you know, we don't... I, I think it's, this will take time. So I think my feeling is people are going to say, like, let's start simple and then build from there in terms of how we want to... How we want to improve this competency determination.
It's a well-attended meeting.
That's right.
There's a reason that our meeting...
For folks watching, we do have a rodent in the room right now.
It's a, it's a very small mouse. Before you start, the rumors. Harmless mouse. Okay, sorry.
So would there be interim policy? I mean, I guess as you think about it. So because it's, this was past mid-year, right? We're partly through the year. And so there's determining... Thank you. Criteria for this year and then sort of longer term. Is that accurate to think about it that way?
I mean, I think there could be iterations of it, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we would call it an interim. We would, we would take a first move.
Okay.
And then we would maybe assess that. I imagine, just at first blush, that most districts probably will look at their current coursework and look at the standards and, and basically look at the assessments that are currently within those courses to determine if there's a way to say, okay, these are the standards that we want to, we have to show mass, student has to show mastery of these standards. They can meet them in these courses through these assessments or something like that. So I think that's probably what most districts will be doing. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I agree. I think trying to use coursework as the competency determination is probably where most places are going to go. Again, some could lean on MCAS, but overall, you'd have to be in a community that, like, kind of rejected question two, whatever the question was. Because otherwise, like, the voters all said not to do it. And so then to come back and say, well, we're going to do it anyways. We could do, but that seems somewhat risky politically. Yeah, so I, we don't, at my school, we have to do the same thing. But I do think we need to figure out, we need to figure out something to make it clear for students in 20, graduating in 2025. And we need to figure out something that doesn't, like, put them at some disadvantage of, like, they just don't have time to take additional coursework. And so we're going to have to think about that. And then also, like, the future, you know, it might be like some type of policy that says, if we wanted to add additional things, like, you know, what are we doing in 2025? What is it in 2026, 2028? And like slowly build it and create different graduation requirements essentially over the next three or four years to allow people the opportunity to meet it. Yeah, absolutely.
I remember you mentioned previously that the MCAS score also associated with the funding we get from the federal government or the state. How is this going to impact our future funding?
This won't impact our, our funding.
Okay.
Yeah. No. Our, our funding will remain the same.
There is a federal participation requirement around state testing. So you have to have 95% of students participate in the testing. But there's no score requirement or anything like that.
I see.
But yeah, there's still a, high school students will still have to take the MCAS. They just won't have to take the MCAS to graduate.
Oh, got it.
But they'll still be required to.
I think that's going to be something that a lot of people are going to realize this spring when they think, hey, I thought the MCAS went away. No. We're still continuing to use the MCAS. I mean, we're still going to be talking about it here. We're still going to be looking at it as a metric. We'll be talking about it as we start to, to build out what our, our implementation plan report looks like at the end of the year, that summative report that I've been talking about. So it's still very central to, and I think a very good reflection of where students are in math, science, and English. But yeah, the, the graduation requirement is some, is an additional thing that Massachusetts did that some other states didn't do. So I've also been in other states where it wasn't a graduation requirement. So that just seemed normal to me, to have it not be a graduation requirement.
So does that, if it's not a graduation requirement, would students opt out of taking it? Or they still have to require to take it?
Yeah, it's still required, yeah. And that ties back to the federal reality.
Okay.
Yeah. But I mean, I think, I don't predict that, that there's any big change for students in elementary school or even middle school in terms of this change. But when it's no longer a grad requirement at the high school level, the incentive is different for students. That's something that people talked about in the run-up to question two was, you know, one of the concerns I had too. That's it.
So, next, under your report, then, ready for the high school site council presentation? Okay. So we're really thankful to have opportunity to learn about Milton High School this evening from Mrs. Cahill and Ms. Crowley. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thanks for having us. And to Superintendent Barrows' point, we have been having the conversation at the high school level with Milton High School administration in regards to MCAS. And that is something that I'll also be bringing forward when we present the program studies in February. So that graduation requirements are part of the program studies as well. So those are conversations I'm hoping to have with Superintendent Barrows prior to that presentation as well. And having said that also, I feel very confident in what we hold as standards for our own high school graduation requirements, putting MCAS aside, which is a great segue into our school site council presentation tonight. So thank you for having us. Karen Cahill, high school principal, Diane Crowley, site council, English teacher. And we're representing our site council for this evening for our presentation. So thank you, Mark. The rest of our site council people could be watching at home, or they're just, we're going to hear about it next week at our meeting or week after, I'm sorry, we get back from vacation. Deborah Bingham and Kelly Seer are two site council members who have been working with us on this presentation, providing us feedback. And they could not be here this evening. Just some work that our site council has been doing this year so far. We have been looking at our school improvement plan and how it aligns with the district implementation plan. That is one thing that a subgroup of the site council has been doing. Along with another subgroup is looking at the community service requirements at the high school. Currently, we have 140 hours, 35 hours per year that students have to fulfill in order to graduate from high school. We are looking at all the district's data and compiling some information that we would like to present to school committee when we do the program studies as graduation requirements. And what is realistic in this day and age for our students who are overscheduled, have jobs, have other commitments, and what's realistic to have meaningful community service? So that is a conversation the site council has been having as well. So I look forward to presenting that to you at a future date. So that is work that we've been doing this year for the site council. Mark, can you please move forward to, right here? So this is just an overview of our school enrollment. Milton High School, on the average, every year, our school enrollment increases just slightly. About an average of 40 to 45 students in the past four to five years have enrolled. New student registration above what is rolling over from the Pierce Middle School. We have seen an increase in students returning to us from private schools, which is something I continue to say. Just today, I spoke with a parent from B.C. High who was looking to have their child come back to Milton High School. I am very confident, as I said earlier, in the academic rigor that exists at the high school. And I feel that our teachers do an exceptional job. And you'll see in some of the data that we'll, we'll be sharing, that what they're doing in the classroom really plays out at the state level and at the national level when it comes to some of the exams that we are doing. Mark, next slide, please. So just the mission statement. We are a school that just encourages our students to be the best version of themselves, to get involved, to be lifelong learners, and to collaborate and work alongside their teachers and their peers. And I hope again that you'll see through what we're doing this evening, that you'll see that in everything that we're doing. So Superintendent Barrows has his implementation plan. Go ahead. And while we'll be focusing on the implementation plan, I'll just also align it to our school improvement plan. The first information that we're using is just the shout-outs that we got at the start of this year. So one of the last times I was reporting to you, we were under, working with NEAS, New England Associations of Schools, to be accredited. And at the end of last year, I had to submit a report, our first report of progress and planning. And they submitted to us at the beginning of September that we are making progress. They have commended us in all of our areas of school improvement plan, academic excellence, and social, emotional, and MTSS supporting. So they asked us to continue to do that work. I got an email probably an hour ago from them saying that, don't forget, you have to give a report come May for the three-year follow-up to NEAS. Because that is something I'll be working on in the next six months to submit back to NEAS for our continual accreditation here at the high school. Special Olympics Unified Champion School. We, we got this recognition last year. We got it again this year. And I am proud to say that the work we are doing here at the high school to be as inclusive as possible, it really does blow me away. And I am honored to be the principal. We have had three new courses added to the high school. We have Unified Art, Unified Music, and Unified PE. And we have students, peer students, who are working with students who are identified as special education to be amazing peer models, to be just classmates. And you will see in the newsletter on Friday, we just recently had a field trip to the South Shore Plaza. Our three programs, Launch, Achieve, and Partners, went with our students from the Unified Art and Unified Music classes to the South Shore Plaza for budget lessons. How to buy, how, I know Katie would be happy with that. Budgeting, social interactions, and how to do that work with someone else. And the feedback I got from the students was just amazing. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to offer these classes. And I hope that the number of students that are enrolling in them just continues to increase over the years. From the college board perspective, we continue to excel with our scores. I'm not going to read this slide to you, but we are exceeding in benchmark college readiness for English and for math. And I still continue to take pride in the fact that we're able to offer the PSATs to our juniors and seniors, sophomores and juniors. Our sophomores for exposure to the exam. Our juniors to be eligible for the national merit. Ms. Crowley is going to talk about that momentarily in regards to some of the recognitions we got through national merit this year at the state level and at the national level. We also, as a school, got what is called AP Gold Status. We're aiming for platinum. Mark, if you don't mind doing the next slide. What happens at the platinum level, actually, it's a few slides down, is if we continue to do the work to expose all of our students to the opportunities of AP, Superintendent Barrows, I believe you had a conversation recently in regards to all of the efforts we're making to keep access open to all of our students, the opportunities that are afforded. We hopefully will gain platinum, platinum status. The gold status says that we are working as best we can for college readiness right now for our students. We're opening early college readiness. We are offering more courses to more students and supporting them financially if they need that work. So next year, we're hoping for platinum. We got one area of platinum for college credit, but culture and optimization, we're hoping to get to platinum as well. So I am really happy with the work that we're doing for all of our students. And Mark, I'm going to ask you to go back a few slides. I just wanted to touch upon that. As we move forward, the next thing we are going to talk about, still under academic excellence for Superintendent Barrows, is the vision of the graduate, and not necessarily what the words mean, but what it looks like here in the building. And I cannot stress enough that everything that you're going to see as Diane talks and we talk about the pictures or the comments that are here really tie into the work that's being done every day in the classroom. Our, our teachers here are phenomenal, our students, and you'll hear me say that to the students and staff every day. Ms. Crowley?
It's very much under the leadership of Principal Cahill and other administrators, that we've been able to grow our kind of branding of what a vision of a graduate is. And the buy-in needs to come not just from staff, but also from students because we need them to understand that these are our guiding principles. This is how we teach. This is how we organize our programs, our co-curriculars, that we want them to be ready to face an ever-changing world, but be ready for opportunities. That's really what, we're in the business of opportunity creating, not just educating in content area, but allowing students to optimize and self-actualize, to understand what their potential is. And as we talk about a vision of a graduate and it hits upon academic, personal, and social growth, we're finding this unifying language that helps students developmentally at their state and adolescence understand what it is that we're doing. So these are students for term one who are acknowledged. And it's such a happy moment for them. You can see that they're, they feel so proud to be acknowledged in front of their peers. And we're seeking to grow opportunities to bring the school together by grade or by some other organizational method, depending on the kind of acknowledgement that's happening, so that peers can be recognized by their peers. They're recognized frequently in their co-curricular and sports opportunities. But we're in the business of teaching, and the students who are excelling academically... and in their contributions to our school should be acknowledged. Next slide, please. To that end, we have a number of students who have received acknowledgements this fall. In the first corner, you see the National Recognition Program from College Board, and this program seeks to acknowledge students who are in varied subgroups, who achieve in the top 10% of the Commonwealth on the PSAT. And we're very proud to present these five students with that acknowledgement, and this is a new program for us. The National Honor Society at Milton High School has a requirement of a 3.7 GPA. So a student with a 3.7 GPA is invited to be part of, and apply for rather admission into the National Honor Society, and there are two opportunities annually, in the spring of junior year and in the fall of senior year. The committee reviewing applications looks beyond just the grade point average to see how students are excelling in their leadership, their service, and their character. Those are the benchmarks that the National Honor Society has. And while we always have a bigger group in junior year, it's nice for us to be able to acknowledge students who have completed their junior year, have maybe had a push up in their academics, particularly as students may be in their first go-around in an AP or an honors course, and they feel so proud all the time to be recognized by the National Honor Society, but especially those senior inductees hold a special place. In the bottom corner, you see our national, our commended students for the College Board. These are the top 34,000 students across the country with the PSAT. This is a remarkable group of students who have varied interests and leadership. They are athletes, and actors, and musicians, and they excel in different areas of their personal and school lives. And it is a tremendous honor for a student to achieve this. They have achieved this particularly because of the variety of courses that Milton High School offers. I believe very deeply, while I'm a teacher of English, that it is our elective courses that bring joy to kids. Most students probably don't wanna just sit in my English class and read Hamlet, but they're very excited to go to automotive class, or to go to art class, or to go to Unified Music. That's where their joy maker is. I think of a program, particularly our Intro to Business program, which is growing wherein these students are excited to learn about the business world. They're excited to be exposed to the stock market, they're excited to understand real-world applications. And the intersection of their literacy skills and their math skills position students to grow and perform on exams like the PSAT and the SAT and their AP exams. And at Milton High School, we don't diminish our elective program. Those courses are just as important in supporting the whole student, because it's frequent that our students find their passion, their joy, their excitement, and their curiosity about their future plans through their elective courses. And that's why we champion those programs and seek to support them. Our National Merit Scholar semifinalist is pictured here, and Sydney is an extraordinary student. She placed in the top 16,000 students around the country in the PSAT. That is no small achievement at all. These students continue to impress and inspire us, they're the reason that we do our jobs, and these students are leaders in the classroom, on the field, in the hallways, in daily life at Milton High School, and they are the best representatives of what it is that we do.
Thank you. Next slide, Mark. And I've said it, and Diana said it, we're talking about general programs, but we can't lose sight of the fact that all of this is happening because of the teaching that's happening in all of our classrooms, in every single classroom. National Scholars. About 50% of our students who take AP courses are some-recognized in some way, shape, or form as a national scholar, and I won't read through what the descriptions are, but they're receiving qualifying scores, and depending on the number of AP exams they take in their life experience at the high school, qualifies them to an AP Scholar, a Scholar with Honor, with Distinction, International. We have two students internationally, which is when College Board is not just national. There are students all over the world that are taking these AP exams. I've been part of an AP chat group, for lack of better words, and talking about when people are taking these exams, some students at 11 o'clock at night, because that's when the exam is being administered globally, that's when they have to take it. So the commitment that we have for our students to take these exams is quite impressive. And so I just wanted to give a shout-out to the hard work that our students and teachers are doing to get this recognition. Mark, can you go ahead? Two slides, please, to the post-grad. Thank you. And just from our Class of 2024, we're working with our seniors right now as college acceptances are coming out. Very proud, 92% of our students have gone on to post-secondary planning at the college level. And to recognize the six students last year, I recognized them at the National Awards Night who were going into the military. I had two, we're having two students come back this week. One already came back this week, he just finished boot camp. And, amazing young man. And another student is coming tomorrow, who also just finished boot camp for the Air Force, I believe.
Yes, for the Air Force.
And we'll be working with our students with local recruiters, just to let people understand what that process looks like, to make sure our students are aware of all of the options that they have afforded to them. I feel that we are opening possibilities to students and having those individual conversations with students, not just about college, but what are the other options out there for them. And to Diane's point earlier, the electives that we offer, I do feel allow students to explore those opportunities. So I just wanted to share this with everyone as we look at our post-secondary plans for our students. Mark, next slide, please. Thank you. And just to close out the academic excellence, this is part of Superintendent Barrows' plan as well, 1.2, I believe, MTSS. But the intervention in strategies and supports we have available for all of our students at the high school. You know, we talk about the students who have IEPs or 504s and the individual support that they get, but the supports listed here are open up to all of our students. The student leaders, I wanna touch upon what they do with our freshman class and the work that we hope that they're gonna do with other students as well. They really support student transitions to the high school for our freshman class. We had a conversation in Central Office today in regards to the transitions, grade five to, five to six and seven, or eight to nine. And I do applaud the work that our student leader advisors and our student leaders do to help our students acclimate to the high school, and not just for the extracurriculars, but for the academics as well, and being the role models that our students really appreciate seeing. Just the Bright program. We've had that program in place for about six or seven years now. And I truly feel that, for those of you who don't know, it's Bridge for Resilient Youth in Transition, based out of the Brookline Public Schools is where it originated. And it is for students who have struggled coming to school for medical reasons, for social, emotional reasons, who have been hospitalized. And we all know what the past five years have brought for a lot of our students' social, for social, emotional well-being. And with this program, those students have been able to return to school in a partial or a full-day transition back. And the teacher in that program works so well with our, with the students, with the families, and with our teachers to make individual plans, and I'm not saying IEPs, I'm saying individual plans for those students, so they can transition back into school at their pace and find success. Again, I have to give our teachers major, major shout-outs for the individual conversations they have with this teacher and those students, to put plans into place for those students still to be challenged, I'm not taking that away from them, but to find success. And I appreciate the district's support of that program. It definitely has found amazing success. Academic Strategies is a new course that we've created or started over the past few years, one or two periods, and I'm happy to say we have it seven periods now. It is a non-special ed course for students that we might refer to case coordination, because that student is struggling for some reason, and we want to see what can we do to support that student in the classroom. And this allows us to work with Gen Ed teachers and those students, and put those Tier One supports into place, and some Tier Twos, to see where that student is going to find success. We've been fortunate that the Gen Ed teachers are asking to teach these courses. I have one teacher from each department working with us to teach these courses, and they're collaborating with all of the other teachers. And I just wanna, hopefully, we'll be able to continue that program here at the high school. Homework Club, parents still call me, one is Homework Club, it's every day after school, and students can come here for an hour and a half and do homework in the library with the teacher supervising them. So there's just ample opportunity for our students to get support. The students at the high school level, we find, seek it out on their own, ask for it, appreciate it, and work with us to find other ways to make, make sure that they are getting that help. So many amazing things happening here at the high school. But before we go on to the Implementation Plan Section 2, I do wanna give two areas that I know we can improve upon as well. And one of them, not necessarily improve upon, but areas of concern, we're just mentioning. One of them is, Ms. Crowley mentioned earlier, the amazing electives we have. And those classes are oversubscribed. They're at 28, 29, 30. And we are turning some students away from those classes because we don't have the sections to do it. And so we are still asking for another business teacher to do that work, and we're hoping, you know, if that goes through, that we can create more opportunities for students to get those non English, math, science, social studies, but those other classes, that Intro to Business, that Personal Finance, that Technology class, Computer Science class, to those vocational ideas out there as well. And while tier Priority Area 3, Operations and Facilities, I'm just gonna touch upon it also, space is also an issue here at the high school. Teachers are sharing classrooms, and they're not complaining about it, but we're losing that place for teachers to go when their classroom is being used, because those smaller office spaces are being used, those smaller music rooms are being used as office spaces. So for teachers to find that space to go and collaborate with their colleague during the day, that is, that is a difficult situation at times. I'm not saying all the time, but at times. So I just wanted to give those two areas, that those are two areas that we still are working on here at the high school. Our teachers always go above and beyond to support all of our students. But those two areas would definitely support the work that we do here at the high school. As we go on to climate, culture, and well-being, Mark, if you can go two slides, yeah, we talked, right, can you go back one? Just climate, culture, and well-being, I wanted to give a shout-out to our student leaders again, the Freshman Olympics we had on the left-hand side. They spent over a week going into every advisory here, working with our freshman class. Our students did it, the teachers didn't, the students did it, door decorating.
A game every day.
Right.
A team-building activities, finding pride, commitment, a collective identity that absolutely intersects with our idea of a vision of a graduate that capitalizes on our desire to support SEL, to support academic learning, and to support personal discovery. And really, so important to many of the teachers here at Milton High School, is helping students build their interpersonal skills, their communication and conversation skills, which for our students who left school in fifth, sixth, seventh grade, some of those seminal moments that they would have had that are incredibly important to their sense of self, weren't possible. And so the chances that we have to give them in something like the Freshman Olympics or a semi-formal are incredibly important, perhaps more so than they were 10 years ago. To that end, we wanna talk about the climate and well-being and the culture building that happens at Milton High School. One of our advisories, an advisory is the program where every student is assigned to an advisor, a teacher, for four years of high school. And the idea is that every student deserves to be paired with an adult with whom they can build a trusting relationship outside of an academic setting. That while I may be a student's teacher in a given grade for a given period, I'm their advisor, and I'm their, the person who can answer their questions, support them, help them find a club, be a recommender for a job, listen to them, talk out their ideas about an oral presentation, or even just hang out during the time that we have together and talk about life. One of our advisories has turned into something called Culture Cats. And you'll see here from this display, this word-art display, that it is a group of students who wish to specifically do work in inclusion and belonging. And they work with their advisors to do outreach to the middle school, to do outreach among our own staff and our own students, to build a climate that is one of acceptance, one of seen people, people, all of us, students and staff alike, feeling seen at Milton High School, is the primary goal of this group. We have a number of programs that happen that unify our students around a shared idea or value. And I'd like to share with you what my advisory did yesterday. We got on the vans with the Christmas carolers from the music program, and after a week of stuffing holiday baggies full of goodies, we took the van down to Unquity House. We had a rousing sing-along with the residents during our advisory period. We distributed the goodie bags to many of people who may not have family nearby or who are visiting to bring them some holiday cheer, to let them know that they are literally our neighbors down the street. The students were so excited to do this, whether they were there as musicians or as greeters, and students who were just going to converse with some of our senior residents. It was a point of pride, and it was a really joyous thing for me to watch. This was born of the students wanting to find something to do in the holidays, to think about how they could reach out to others, and they worked diligently, and they were so glad to know that this community exists. They've asked about other opportunities in which they can engage. And they were a wonderful face of the Milton Public Schools yesterday, going out and sharing their talents, their time, and their treasure. But there are so many ways that this happens, through the Student Council, through the Principal's Advisory Group, through programs such as the Historically Black College and University Visits. Our school is alive and thrumming with excitement, because students want to be here, and they find friendly faces in our custodial staff, in our lunchroom staff, in the classroom. And it's not limited to the idea of, "That person is my teacher." It's, "That person is my person." And so I do believe that that is a strength of our school, and our students benefit from that culture.
Thank you. Mark.
So, in a space crunch, we have to find ways to use space creatively, but we were using space creatively before. Our library is the cornerstone of our school, and those of us who love books and love the notion of community understand what a library can be and should be. And our librarian is doing a myriad of activities to draw excitement before and after school, but especially during the day. Teaching classes, inviting students to submit pictures of their dogs caught reading, putting up student art displays, hosting events, never saying no. If we can fit one more group in here, if we can fit one more class in here for a special program, we will. We're using the Wildcat Cafe, the hallways, for collaboration, for interacting, for growing academic, personal, and social skills, which is really what we're doing every day.
Thank you, Mark. And just to, to close it up, we just focus also on everything in extracurricular. We have talked about all of the opportunities here at the high school, but to be mindful of everything that our students are involved in. I'm not gonna open up, ask Mark to open up this slide, but it's a 62, no. Basically 62 slides of all the different clubs and activities now, athletic teams that are here at the high school. So I had Milton High School Information Night last week for grades six through eight, and I shared this out with the community. So those families are exposed to, what could their child do if they choose to come here to the high school? What are the opportunities available? And isn't, it isn't like all of them. Students are constantly coming to me saying, "Hey, I have an idea for this club, I have an idea for that club, what can we do?" I just got an email this week for the Sunrise Club, haven't read it yet, but I can only imagine. So I appreciate the fact that students know they have a voice here. Ms. Crowley mentioned something earlier, and I do wanna give a shout-out to a student who was online earlier, Adam Chair.
Ms. Crowley mentioned something earlier, and I do want to give a shout out to a student who was online earlier, Adam Chairs, who is part of the school committee, school calendar group. He has worked diligently with his committee to give outreach to the students, to get feedback. So students have a voice when it comes to the district calendar. And I appreciate the work that our students and student government are doing and putting that time in so the students know that they have a voice. There is AP data and MCAS data if we want, but I know you've seen that, a lot of that already is my understanding. So at this point, I will say this is where we're at. And if there's questions or comments, we are happy to answer them. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Questions?
I did, I did open this. Did open that, I'm using a slide deck to close our activities as well. So I did actually, thank you, great presentation, you were very thorough, you've covered a lot of my questions, so I appreciate that. I did have one question, you touched upon it earlier, about working with the transition between AP and SAT.
Yes.
If you could just kind of elaborate on that.
Sure, we actually spoke about it this morning at our DLT meeting. We are really more seeing where we are lacking in the communication so families can make informed decisions when they come to the high school. You know, I spoke with Dr. Fish earlier today and we'll continue to have that conversation. Our counselors go down to the middle school, and I say during course selection time, for lack of better words, you know, in the late winter, early spring, to talk about course selection process and all of the courses at the high school. So students can make those informed decisions, what are the courses, what are the high school graduation requirements? We will do a program of studies night where all of the department heads will be here to answer general questions about curriculum, but also individual questions that families might have on a separate basis. The transition to the high school, students are ready to come to the high school. They are ready, they are already exposed to the schedule. At the Pierce, it is also a seven-day rotating schedule, except they have six periods a day where we have five periods a day. They already have the four lunches. So respectfully to the parents and the adults who don't understand the schedule, the kids pick up pretty quickly on how to move around the high school. So they're used to that get-up-and-go transition. Whereas going from fifth to sixth grade, they're not used to that. Students are already exposed to the athletics. I see them here at the basketball games and the football games, so they, they're familiar. What they're not familiar with is just, you know, you're in high school now and everything you do over these four years matters to what you're going to do when you leave. And not that it didn't matter in middle school, but those conversations that we're having from the moment they walk in the door, about making those good choices and be the best version of yourself, that's what we start with day one. Actually, prior to day one, when we do orientation. And it's still, like I said, the biggest, I think we really need to work on our communication, you know, with, so the teachers at the middle school and the high school, those vertical alignments and having those conversations. So those middle school teachers are working with our high school teachers to know exactly what is being covered in those classes so they can make those appropriate recommendations for leveling. And, you know, the leveling, should it be Spanish or should it be Latin? Or should it be biology honors or college prep honors? And what does that going to look like?
I know, I think maybe in a previous presentation, you've mentioned like parents have the opportunity to kind of put students in like, hey, I want my student in this class and so on and so forth.
Yes.
How do you find that to be? Like, do you feel like the student is typically prepared for it, like the academic rigor? Or is it, like, are there things that we can do at the middle school to kind of make sure that that transition is seamless?
Yeah, I think overall, you know, we, teachers make recommendations and that's what we say. But students and families have the right to override regardless. But what we do ask, we've always asked, but we've more formalized it now, is that the student has a conversation with the teacher on the why. Why did you make that recommendation? And this is why I want to override your recommendation, you know, those honest conversations. Yes, there are decisions that don't go well, you know, and we work with the student and the families to figure that out. Again, it comes down to people understanding, you know, students come to the high school and right now, and I say right now, we do not have a world language graduation requirement. And here what I'm saying is right now, the state of Massachusetts for state colleges expect at least two years of the same language. So I always say that. And you'll look at our students at the high school and most take three or four years of a world language. So that is something direct for world language, and I've talked about too, putting in a world language graduation requirement. So people think when they walk in the door day one, they have to have a world language. And for some students who might have executive functioning or whatnot, we say, you know what, put that off a year. Get used to the schedule, get used to the rigor that exists at a high school with levels versus, you know. And we work with the families, there's not a one shoe, one size that fits all. So we really try to personalize those experiences for students. I think too, the attendant independence that comes with being in high school has to be lived before a student understands how to optimize it, to understand that our teachers are in well before the start of the school day to give individualized or group help or review, that we're here after school. You don't always have to make an appointment, you can be in the building, you can use the library. There is an opportunity for NHS tutoring. And there are many opportunities for students, no matter what their comfort level is with school or their past success, to absolutely meet with success here because of the individualized attention that is put on the person and the opportunity to practice difficult conversations, to engage with the student about whatever this issue might be, how to go through the lunch line, organizing a backpack, how to ask a teacher for help when they think that might be weird. Those are conversations we're having all the time. And each uprising ninth grader who comes to us is, as you know, as parents and community members and aunts and uncles and out there in the world, you know that every student is individual in that. And we see that, and our counselors see that, and they do an exceptional job in helping students connect appropriately with teachers for either academic, personal, or their social issues so that we can address those in the first weeks of school.
It's really impressive, especially when I click onto this sixty-six pages of clubs and athletic teams. My assumption is that it doesn't happen all the time, like the clubs might have been the fall semester, spring semester, or is it all these sixty-six clubs and athletic teams are happening all the time throughout the school year?
Teams are by season and organized through the MIAA, although we do have a weight room program where students can drop into the weight room and use it individually with adult supervision throughout the school year. But our clubs run for the most part year-round. There may be some things that are seasonal. For instance, within the theater program, auditions are seasonal. You try out for the fall play or the spring play. But the Asian Culture Club, National Honor Society, the Elephant in the Room, those are organizations that meet regularly throughout the year. Clubs meet before and after school and frequently, teachers will take a straw poll of that year's members to say, you're all on the soccer team, so why don't we meet in the morning until soccer is over? There are evening outings and evening meetings, there are lots of ways for students to be involved. So if a club is on that, it's running and there are students involved in it.
That's amazing. And you also mentioned about the advisory program. I'm wondering about, you mentioned that the student will have the same advisor for four years in high school. I'm wondering about the ratio of the advisor and student, like one advisor versus how many students?
It's roughly one advisor to seventeen or eighteen students. Unfortunately, the numbers are going up with enrollment, but we try to do that. Every classroom is utilized during advisory, so every teacher has about seventeen or eighteen students.
That's about students. And how long is advisory period?
Twenty-six, twenty-six minutes.
And within the twenty-six minute, you were able to take your school of students and go out and have that.
It took a little five minutes on the one end and five minutes on the other, but yes, yes. And so what we did in advisory was extraordinary. My advisory happens to be seniors and they're sophisticated. I've had them for four years, they're a fun group of kids. But even with freshmen, there are lots of wonderful things that can happen, such as the freshman Olympics. But our advisory program is a product of two things. One, NIAS telling us several years ago that we needed to build an opportunity for students to have one-on-one connections with adults who were not their primary academic teachers. And the second reason is our robust group guidance program wherein students are meeting with counselors to learn about the program of studies or the college application process, or how to get into the Naviance platform, what it means to take the PSAT in tenth grade. Absolutely. So there's a little bit of downtime built into that, there's a chance to connect. We help students navigate whatever problem or joy that they're having in a given day.
And how often do you guys meet as advisories?
Advisory is every day.
Every day for twenty-six minutes?
Yes.
Say the beginning of the day or maybe?
It's middle of the day, it's roughly nine forty-seven to ten seventeen.
Oh, I see.
Roughly, not that I have the schedule memorized. Don't ask me what day it is, but I may be able to look at the times.
Well, since you mentioned about the time, it's very interesting that our school's starting time is very precise. Right, seven fifty-two or seven fifty-five and then like two twenty-five, anyway, it's just a little bit hard to remember. Anyway, I really love that you guys have this program and meet the students every day for twenty-six minutes. Because if you tell me like you only meet once a week, it doesn't seem like long enough to get to know each student, especially when you have seventeen students in your group. But over four years with this same group of students, I hope the connection between the adult and the student will be stronger and stronger. But what if there's a situation that people does not click? Do you ever have that situation and do you have to like advise the student to move on to another advisor?
So to what Ms. Crowley was saying earlier, you know, when we look at students, it's individualized approach. So if we find that a student might not be making success with a particular placement, then we do review that and see if there's another place for that student to go. We're constantly working with our students for the past two weeks, myself, Assistant Principal Tran and Assistant Principal Mackinaw, along with two of my department heads, have been in the hallways during advisory, consciously being in the hallway for the entire advisory period, just to see what students might not be making it to advisory, because I'll be honest, that happens. And we're asking, why aren't you going? What's going on? What can we do to make sure that you have a place that you can go to? We're working with our teachers to make sure that advisory is what NIAS wants it to be. And it's being utilized to the best of the staff and the student's capacity. So yeah, there are times. And the teacher, the educator responsibility is no different from a class. I take attendance, I write hall passes, I make sure students are seated. And if somebody needs to go to their locker or bathroom or pick up a book that they left somewhere else, that happens. But it has a framework that is consistent and safe, but yet also provides the flexibility we need to build the relationships in a different way than happens in a conventional academic course.
I got a couple of questions on AP and SAT. First is like just general framing, like I think both those are really important metrics as it relates to like thinking about high school. And to the point you made at the beginning, rigor, right? How are we really providing strong academics for students? And I think, you know, there are a lot of ways in which those measurements can be used to kind of falsify rigor by limiting access, right? And so like you restrict, just have a few kids really take the SAT or take your APs and then your scores look really good, but you're actually not doing a service to kids. And so I think that's always like a balance. I think when I look at all the SAT data and stuff, I just want to shout out Milton High School because I think, you know, you are a standout within the state within that. When I look, you're in the top eightieth percentile in average SAT combined score, but you're in the top ninety-fourth percentile in SAT test takers against kind of your total student population. And there's only four other traditional school districts that actually like rank higher than you in your SAT combined score that have like a similar level of participation. So again, you are maximizing success with access. And I think that is something that we always want to be really mindful of. And we're not just chasing a high combined score if that means that we're kind of dissuading kids from opportunity to take the SAT.
I do believe as a content area teacher that the support of the district and providing the opportunity for the PSAT to all tenth and eleventh grade students, regardless of their ability, their interest in school, whoever they are, the fact that they are sitting and having that experience opens up their understanding of what it is to sit for an exam of that kind of rigor. And it positions our counselors and teachers and even our school leaders to have conversations about the future with students as young as fifteen and tenth grade. So much of this goes back to the district at large and the leadership of the district recognizing that providing that at no cost to families is very important because when students have that experience in school, my students take that PSAT with me in tenth grade in advisory, so they know me. It's a safe environment, and testing is very hard emotionally for kids at fifteen, for everybody. But I do believe to your point about our later success in encouraging testing and that risk-taking to consider what the opportunities ultimately are for a graduating student and our vision of a graduate is beginning with the support that the superintendent's office gives us in allowing students to test at no cost for the PSAT twice in their high school career. And to do it during the school day? That, yes, and to do it during the school day, which means nobody feels intruded upon on a Saturday or kids who are reluctant learners or who don't always enjoy coming to school, don't want to come on a Saturday. And that was one of the reasons we also started doing school day SAT. So all students had access to the exam. And we're honestly looking at, and this is the first time you'll be hearing it, offering the SAT school day to juniors as well. We haven't done that yet. But we're finding with colleges now bringing back SATs as a requirement, the classes of twenty-five and twenty-six, it's still test optional, but you're starting to see colleges saying, oh, we're requiring the scores again, to offer another opportunity for students during the school day so we know that students have access if they want it. So I appreciate you finding that information and sharing it out. And to Diane's point, I do appreciate the district's support in allowing us to do that during the school day for students to have that access. So thank you.
Yeah, I think those are all great efforts and completely agree with all the points you made. I think AP is another one, right? Again, like how do we get more kids to do AP access? I actually found the supporting like AP presentation that was like linked, really great. And so loved that, again, just the amount of increased access that we are seeing, more kids taking the tests every year. Again, I think it's phenomenal. You know, I think you are at the ninety-second, and I look at this, you're at the ninety-second percentile in terms of total number of tests taken versus your high school enrollment. That's just, again, really phenomenal. I think about the, one of the measures y'all have within here and just flag is like percent of three exams. I think another really important measure is just like percent of AP test, AP students who are taking the exam, right? Because research shows that even if a kid takes a one or a two on an exam, their likelihood of graduating in college increases. And so like, I think, and again, as we talked about with SAT, there are sometimes schools or teachers or whoever like want to kind of protect their AP score and like dissuade a kid that they think is going to get a one or two from taking it. I think that's obviously, that's a disservice to the kid. Like we want kids having that, to the point you made about the SAT, the experience of the rigorous assessment, right? So they're prepared for that in high school. So flagging all that. I guess my general question on AP to round out like the shouting out is just like, how do we keep doing more of this? Like how do we create, you know, have y'all thought about AP for all courses? Like to try and have, you know, really as close to every student as we can, taking AP exams? Or, and obviously the one benchmark within your gold piece versus going to platinum is like, how do we get kids to take more, not just one exam, but five exams, right? Lots of exams for other career.
So any student who's enrolled in an AP at Milton High School has to take the exam. That is one of the expectations that students have, if you're enrolled, you have to take the exam. We continue to look at what other AP offerings we have and how we can get more students enrolled. And again, as long as you meet the prereqs for courses that lead up to AP. AP is open enrollment, any student can take them. Unfortunately, I have to go back to, you know, I think of AP micro and macro. We have had to turn students away because those enrollments, we've been running those thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four students in a class. So to answer your question, more staffing, more opportunity for people to understand what these courses are. There is an English AP seminar course which replaces English ten when I do the research, you know. So there are opportunities, we just need the time to be able to really dig deep. We offer twenty-three, twenty-four AP courses right now. With open enrollment? With open enrollment, with, you have to take the test. So just exploring whether the APs are out there and what students can enroll in. We just started AP Government a few years ago, AP African-American, and there was a third one. And AP Studio Art, we split up our two art classes, so we're getting there. To your point, I teach AP Literature in senior year and I currently have a student who began high school in who began high school in a co-taught. And it's an AP and is also in a second English class for fun. So, the path forward is there for students, and the opportunities are there. And the support of the community and the district allows us to provide these enriching, rigorous academic opportunities for students that open up opportunities for them.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add is, you know, as somebody who's focus is on positive youth development, sort of that's the lens that I bring to the work. I commend you for, even though you're not using that language, but really sort of approaching the work from a student-centered perspective and really looking at young people holistically, which I think, you know, settings that have the privilege of having young people with them for that many hours during the, you know, for the course of 12 months. If I think more spaces sort of approached sort of their work with young people from that perspective, right? Thinking about the importance of adults in the lives of young people, whether you're the teacher in front of them, whether you're, you know, the custodian, whoever it is that you're having positive interactions, and the impact that that has on the young people is critical. And I just wish more spaces sort of recognize that. So, I commend you for that, because I could hear it all. I was like, yeah, it's positive youth development, positive youth development, good work, you know? So, I just commend you for all that. And I think even the offerings of all those clubs, right? It's allowing young people to tap into that interest and identify their joy. And so, how do they, then you're shaping more than just, it's more than just scholars. That's important, and academic excellence is key. But you also want them to be nurtured in other ways and grow in other ways. So, I commend you for that. I don't think I had heard that story as much as I heard it this evening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I have one more question on the last slide, which is, you mentioned about the four-year cohort graduation rate, because I'm Asian, so obviously we look at the Asian number. And I noticed that there's none, there's no data for the Asian graduates. And I know that from the percentage of the students on page on slide number four, that out of 1,092 students in high school, we do have 7.1%. And I remember seeing somebody graduated last year who are Asian, so I'm just curious about if you have data for the other subgroups that is not mentioned on here.
I can look up that subgroup. This was from...
Desi.
Desi.
Ah, okay.
So, I can't specifically speak to that right now.
Usually, if the cohort is of a certain size, they just, they don't include it within the accountability like indexes. So, again, it's a table from the Desi profile.
Got it.
Thanks, Mark.
You can take up that issue with Desi.
Our data.
I just want to ask, I know in previous years, we really struggled with kids coming to school, right? Like getting them in the building. How has that gone? I know you've made some changes to the handbook this year and put in some, you know, just stricter guidelines. How has that?
It's helped. It's definitely helped. I, one of my professional practice goals last year was looking at the tardy rate of students to school or the attendance, and it has improved significantly. But there are still students who struggle, and we continue to have those conversations on how to get those students to school. And it is not a school conversation where we're engaging the family and the student. And, you know, to your point earlier, that it is a student-centered conversation, and if the student isn't part of the conversation, then there's no point in having the conversation, to be perfectly honest with you. They are young adults, and they have to understand the implications of their actions as well. But we have to dig deeper onto why it's happening. And I mentioned earlier about students being over so oversubscribed, and there are still students who are leaving here and they are going to work for seven hours after they leave here. And I don't say that to be funny. That is the reality for some of them. And so, school is happening, but it's not the priority for them. So, we are really trying to support the students in being creative in how we can help them get that work done. So, I know that was a vague answer, but it is still something we need to address, and we're going to continue to work on it.
Well, thank you so much. It's really like moving to hear your passion clearly come through for the students. And it's so, you know, I think we always are juggling a lot of moving parts, and these site council presentations are a good opportunity to take a pause and really reflect on those experiences that our students are actually having day in and day out in our different buildings. And we are here in this building all the time, obviously, but it's a nice opportunity to stop and think about, you know, what's going on with all of the people that are in this building every day, and thanks for the work that you do. And it's exciting now, having had this discussion, to look forward to the program of study conversation. And it's exciting to just even know that you're considering some continuing to like evolve the program of study, which is obviously always happening in order to keep providing these great opportunities for students. So, thank you for your great presentation and for the conversation.
Thank you. Everyone have a nice holiday break. Thank you all. Thank you.
So, the other topic that we have to discuss under the superintendent's report this evening pertains to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the very exciting news that we've received since our last meeting, that we have indeed been invited in. And so, do you want to give a little?
Sure.
Sort of update on?
So, I emailed you all just to let you know kind of a few of the different milestones over the last couple of weeks. As we first heard that we were being invited on Friday, we attended Friday to the official MSBA board meeting where they recognized us, along with a number of other districts, and shared a little bit about what the process would look like. We had a webinar today to understand what module one, there are different modules that you go through as part of this process. They explained it's a five to seven-year-long process. We're in the eligibility phase right now. It's a 270-day module. It starts on May 1st, but there's work that we can do prior to May 1st to prepare for that official start. And that's some of what we'll be talking about tonight. I have talked to a lot of folks throughout Milton over the last couple of weeks, and I think there's a collective sigh of like relief from, I think, everyone in town to have the support of the state. It's something that we've been grappling with for quite a long time. And kind of a renewed sense of energy around this. And as you can hear from every presentation, the presentation tonight was also stating like the central offices here, and if we ended up somewhere else, there would have more space here. But that's a separate story. But space continues to be a concern. It's not, it's not going away, and we continue to have to kind of work around it. And there's an impact on students and staff. So, it's, from that standpoint too, it's just, it's, I can, everyone, I think, is feeling a little bit more momentum now with this. There's a lot of work to do, and it's a long process, but the energy is high. Do you want to talk about the articles?
Sure. So, and I'm realizing, I know we approved our agenda already. We obviously have a school building committee report on this agenda later. But I also kind of feel like part of this discussion is obviously involving the work that's happened at the school building committee since our last meeting as well. So, we are going to look at a couple of warrant articles, which are sort of steps in this process that you were just referencing, Peter. But Mark and Selena, I feel like it maybe actually make more sense to kind of talk about the school building committee report in the context of this as well. So, I don't want to put you on the spot with that, but it may also end up being redundant, you know, too. The two articles that we have, maybe I'll just sort of frame them out, and then particularly for the funding article, if either of you would like to kind of chime in on anything I've missed. So, the two warrant articles are intended to come before the town in February, the February town meeting taking place at the end of that month. We have one warrant article which is going to be submitted by the school building committee. That is an article on funding, which is to recommend that the town appropriate some for the purpose of the feasibility study, which is, as you just mentioned, Peter, kind of the next step that will begin in May, that's May 1st. So, in being able to address this at the February town meeting, you know, it allows that to be sort of teed up and ready to hopefully begin moving forward as soon as the period opens up. So, that's one thing, and that is something you can maybe, let's pause and just talk about that one first, because that is one that you all considered at your school building committee meeting. You voted on that, and this is not a binding vote on the school committee's part, but rather just an opportunity to make like an additional recommendation on something obviously pertaining to the project. So, is there any more information you want to share about that funding article?
Yeah, just that the number came from the owner project manager, right? Our paid consultants, and you know, we talked about what is the right amount of funding that's supposed to get us through schematic design phase of the projects before you come back to the town to ask for full funding. So, just wanted to make sure that the amount would get us through there. Again, that's from our consultants who said yes, and that they're the ones who came up with that number. So, that context in terms of how the number came up, and you have the full school building committee voted unanimously in favor to recommend this warrant article and push this towards the slide board.
So, that's the first, that's one of the articles that we have. The second article that we have pertaining to MSBA tonight is one that the school committee will submit, because this is an article that addresses the roster of the school building committee. The school building committee was originally created in 2019 at town meeting, as we all know, you know? We've been hearing about the fact they've been doing their work for many years already. But by joining MSBA for this project from this point forward, there are some new requirements in terms of the roster, or in other words, like the roles of the people who sit on the school building committee. And in the language of the article that we have here, you can just see listed out essentially what positions would need to be added to the school building committee to align with what MSBA requires. As you can see here, that includes the superintendent of schools, the town administrator, director of consolidated facilities, an individual with NC PPO certification, which is a special certification that I know a couple of our staff in town do have. Katie, you have that certification, for example. But that would be appointed by the school committee, an individual who holds that required certification. There would be a school principal added that would be appointed by the school committee, as well as a local town budget official, somebody who has a role in overseeing the budget of the town. The most straightforward way to go about adding these positions in the way that would support, best support kind of the commitment to this next phase of the school building committee and the work, is to add these positions. And, you know, I've had the discussion, I've tried to understand this, attending the meetings, talking to Peter, talking to Nick Milano, is to add these staff positions who are non-voting members of the school building committee. So, the school building committee is currently comprised of nine members, voting members. In order to align with MSBA, what we're proposing here would be to add this additional six members, but because they are staff of the town, they would be their ex officio capacity as non-voting members, but fully participating in all of the meetings and conversations to make sure that the voting members, which are appointed by the moderator, select board, and school committee in form of two school committee members, that, you know, they are all fully informed in taking their votes by the district, the town, on these key issues. So, that's my understanding of this and our responsibility, because the district is the, you know, the entity within town that is sort of the lead for this project. I mean, this is a school district project. MSBA has invited Milton Public Schools into the program. And so, that's the reason why it makes sense for us to be the entity that submits this article. And the last thing I'll just say is, I think there's a shared, like, goal of allowing us to just move forward following the requirements of the process, but in as a, you know, a way that carries momentum and allows us to sort of build on the progress that we've made to date, that sort of redoes the parts of the process that need to be redone, but that allows us to, you mentioned a five to seven-year timeframe, that allows us to like accomplish this project as quickly and efficiently as possible, knowing how acute our overcrowding continues to be. So, by just returning to town meeting, to ask town meeting to amend the school building committee that it established by simply adding these positions that in a very straightforward manner comply with what's required, we feel, I feel, that that's kind of the best path to just, you know, move forward and be prepared for May 1st to just continue hitting the ground running. So, I don't know if people have questions, but we will submit this article if approved, and then the select board will have the opportunity to weigh in on it, the warrant committee, of course, and then it would go to a vote at town meeting, along with the one that the school building committee has put forward, about the $1.5 million for the feasibility study. So, we don't have these motions on the floor yet, but before we kind of do that, are there questions or comments on one or both of these?
I had a question about the feasibility study, and is that the way it's written, because it's an amendment to the previous article of 2019, where it says feasibility study of an elementary school or middle school for the project for the Cunningham School. So, that's the part?
That is, that is the way that our application to MSBA was written. You have to...
You have to point to the school where it's the school of need, and then what you're, like, that's the school with most pressing need, and you're doing a feasibility study of that to determine how to address the overcrowding.
That's right. And that's, for example, that's why MSBA did their site visit at Cunningham.
Okay.
And so, that is the, you know, the school-based location that we have been invited to explore. Yeah.
And I don't, I have a second question, but I don't know if this should wait, so I'll ask it, and then you can say wait. The five to seven-year timeline, is there, you know, knowing that things aren't always built for efficiency, is there the ability to impact that timeline at all, given the work that's been done? Or is it, are there things that, because they've been done and that this committee has been working for so long, that they can, that it could expedite the timeline at all? Do we know, or is it just?
So, that's the hope.
Yeah.
Is that some of the work that has happened already can be, can help us move through the process faster. So, hopefully not the seven year, but more of the five-year work. Yes, exactly. But, there are some things that we will have to, you know, redo or revisit and that is just part of what it means to be now part of this process.
Okay.
Thanks. But, for instance, there's a lot of like even just the reconfiguring of the school building committee in order for us to meet the requirement already. It's like, we already have it. We're not trying to form it from scratch.
Scratch.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
Thanks.
To your question on the article language, that's just the article language from the MSBA, just with Milton's information in it.
Yeah, it was more the question about the Cunningham School, but that explains it.
So, I did have a question. And the, I, I mean, I like the idea of being prepared for May 1st. That makes sense to like hit the ground running. And I did have a question about like, can we move the process, you know, speed it up a bit with the work we've already done? My question is, I know we have a budget deficit in the town. So, where would we get funding for this in relation to like our 9.44 level service increase or needs-based budget? Would we have to go for an override in order to make this happen? How does that all fit in?
So, the current expectation is that this would be a debt obligation through the town's traditional kind of debt that they take out, but not require a two and a half override by the full funding will, but at a million and a half. Obviously, like the Cunningham fourth floor allocated two million, so that still stays kind of under. It is likely that that, this allocation will impact what other things could be taken out under that kind of capital debt within the current year or within future years certainly, right? Because there's still a limit on that. That's not an unlimited fund. But, the amount itself is of a small enough nature that it can just be done through kind of the normal debt service, not with a two and a half override.
So, then the Cunningham third, I'm calling it third and fourth floor, because we're going, you know, we're asking for an increase in that, would that be affected at all by this?
I don't know. I mean, I think it depends on not just that, but any other capital request that could be seen as more of a priority than the fourth floor and then just how much all those things. So, I think all those pieces come together as it relates to like what can fit under our debt service obligation. But, yeah, can't say exactly.
It's a capital planning meeting next month.
We're actually meeting tomorrow at 7:30 in the morning. Need of a dentist, we'll need it. So, that is just a short meeting to commence the cycle for this year. We have not yet met, but that tomorrow is sort of a kickoff for the, yeah, for capital to start meeting. Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, so I will go in the order we have them on, in the motions. I will make a motion to recommend that the town vote to amend Article 6 of the 2019 February special town meeting by adding the following positions to the school building committee established by said Article 6. By adding the superintendent of schools, town administrator, director of consolidated facilities, individual with MC PPO certification appointed by the school committee, school principal appointed by the school committee, and local town budget official appointed by the town administrator, and that those would all be non-voting positions. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. So, now we can move to the next motion, which I will make the motion to recommend that the town of Milton appropriate the amount of $1,500,000 for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study of an elementary or middle school project for the Cunningham School, 44 Edge Hill Road, Milton, Mass. 02186, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, said amount to be expended under the direction of the school building committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Anything else under superintendent's report?
We got-
All right.
Got, everything covered.
So, next we have then the chair's report. We are going to continue our conversation about the school year calendar. As we look ahead, not yet considering the specific calendar for '25, '26 next year, but really trying to move towards some clarity. As you, you know, Peter and the leadership team go about drafting the calendar for next year, which we will look at and vote upon in January. So, I guess just a couple framing comments and then we'll kind of look at some information that, that I pulled together to try to like ground the discussion and then we'll just open it up and see where people are at at this point. So, just in terms of sort of making sure that the community or anybody listening is clear about what we're doing, having this conversation. It is the role of the school committee annually to approve the school calendar for the district. And, you know, we understand as a school committee that it's our responsibility to do that in the way that ultimately best supports student learning. And one thing we've been really focused on is our understanding that creating inclusive learning environments that foster a sense of belonging is one really important aspect of this, because we know that, as we talk about here, safe and supportive schools are really what promote academic excellence for our students. And we want to optimize our calendar as best we can to support students, their families, and our staff to all be successful. Something we also understand, of course, is that, you know, in this country, we have a separation of church and state. We are a public school district and so we are not practicing religions or promoting specific religious practices within our schools, but we also at the same time want to be supportive of many of our students, their families and staff who are religious, for whom that is an important part of their identity, as well as cultural practices that, you know, in some cases mean they are celebrating holidays that are taking place during the school year. And, you know, we want to be respectful and supportive of that. We also have thought about through this process, the opportunity to enrich all of our students' learning by raising awareness of multiculturalism that exists in our schools. That includes learning about world religions as well. And there are both academic ways that that, you know, occurs through our standards in Massachusetts, but there's also, you know, helpful opportunities to do that in a more extracurricular way that we've heard some examples about. So, I just want to acknowledge, obviously, for anybody who's been following along, this is not a new topic. It's something that school committees and communities all over grapple with. They grapple with it over time and we here in Milton have been directly discussing this topic for the past couple of years and at different points in the past, as, you know, our calendar has evolved through time. Our particular focus for this discussion over the past year has really, and the community listening process that we undertook this fall, was to really think about specifically religious and cultural holidays in terms of how, whether, or how we acknowledge those with a day off or not. And, you know, we also though, even with that specific focus, know that we can't consider this question in a vacuum and there are a lot of other related questions have come up through this process of, of listening and exploring. Some of them include, you know, questions about when we start and end the school year. A layer of that is how we adapt to climate change and the fact that our classrooms have gotten hotter at the beginning and the end of the school year, for example. We've also been hearing questions about how we incorporate professional learning and plan thoughtfully for that. And we know that that's important to ensure that our, our educators can be keeping up with things like new technology, like best practices to meet the needs of all of our students. So, that's an important related piece that's come up. And just to name that, you know, we are all sitting around here at this table, like balancing a lot of different perspectives on this topic. We've heard from folks in our listening sessions by emails, public comments, probably our friends and neighbors, people that we encounter just individually. And we know that there's not necessarily agreement within groups as well. So, there, there are just a lot of competing and, you know, complimentary things for us to be considering. I'd like to just acknowledge my gratitude to all of you for like participating in this discussion because I know it's not easy. I think now and then things come before a school committee that just feel really challenging because you know that no matter what you're going to do with the best of intentions, you're, you, it will not be possible to please everybody with the decision you're going to make. And I think that's pretty hard to appreciate if you haven't sat in a seat like under the pressure to take that decision. So, I know that it's not easy. I personally sit here with like a pit in my stomach, you know, each time we bring this up for that reason. There are people that I know I personally deeply respect, you know, who have shared perspectives with us, with me, that I, no matter what, like there, there will be people I personally deeply respect that I will deeply disappoint with whatever happens. That's really not easy. But, what this presentation is going to be is just a very brief attempt to kind of summarize some of the key points and themes that have come through. It's not comprehensive, it's not exhaustive, it's just trying to summarize this for us to kind of like help us have this next piece of the discussion. The goal, I think, of this discussion tonight is to kind of bring what we've each considered and heard into the, into a, an attempt to arrive at some type of consensus, okay? Hopefully, where four of us, at least, if not five or six of us sort of share a perspective on how we can best meet the needs of our students and our community when it comes to holidays, religious or cultural holidays with days off or not days off. We want through this discussion and to take a vote on recommending an approach to provide you with clarity, but this isn't like set in stone. We're not making a commitment to anything tonight per se, because as we're all aware, when it comes back in January is when we're going to look at the actual dates. So, I'm going to try to present some scenarios here, not as like options strictly speaking to choose from, but really just to try to ground us in dates for 2025 and 2026 because from our last conversation, it emerged that that was a piece we had missed. We hadn't gotten to that point yet, which is why we took more time to have this discussion tonight. So, Mark, can you, yep, thanks.
You have the logo this time.
I got, I, I, I got the logo, so. Just on the title slide. This is, okay, so you all have this, we're not going to like talk through every slide. This, this is really just a reminder of some of the holidays that have been on our radar and just what the dates are in '25, '26. So, you can go forward, please. Okay, there's two slides of some key assumptions that I just wanted to capture. This is not, this is not to like limit the discussion in any way. So, if any of you have like, want to push back on any of these assumptions or expand them, please do. I think we're having this conversation, having arrived in a place where we originally were considering the request to add Eid as a day off, but over the course of last spring's conversation, last winter-spring, we began to consider this sort of trio of days off that we were thinking about adding that included Diwali and Lunar New Year in an attempt to acknowledge the growing diversity of our population in Milton. But, I'm just putting that out as a question, you know, because we can, you know, that's just something I think we've talked about, but we can keep discussing it. Just to reiterate, we're not, we haven't been talking about removing days off for any of the holidays that we see here. We have assumed that we would continue to have a winter recess and that we would continue to have February and April vacations, which is what the districts around Massachusetts have. I want to really be sure to underscore that any changes to removing currently existing holidays have bargaining implications depending on the holiday. There are different ones. As you all know, we're at the very beginning, really about to begin the process of negotiations for our, our union contracts. And so, just to keep in mind that, you know, what we recommend or what we may even ultimately choose to approve in January may be pending negotiations over the coming months. I want to acknowledge that we don't currently have enough demographic information to look at specifics in terms of numbers of families within our, our community who celebrate various holidays and that's a limitation that we've run into in our process. I think we've done a lot of good work to try and engage with the community, but we haven't been able to go to that level of gathering data. So, that's a limitation of our process currently. An assumption I think we have coming into this is that we will be maintaining generally the same amount of PD time. So, this is just like adjacent to the conversation, but again, it's connected because we heard from our community members that when we end the school year matters and also the consistency of students having days off within the year, for whatever reason, is a very important concern. And there is a concern with having too many days off, too much time off learning within meeting our requirement of 180 days, of course, but that's something that we haven't talked about compromising on because we understand how important our professional learning is. On the next slide, these are just some of the key assumptions continued that are a little more logistical. And again, they're not set in stone. These are just the pieces of information that I think are like in the background of our discussion. And all of this is up for conversation. Does anybody have any questions or like clarifications, I guess, about any of these pieces? Or can we just quickly run through the various scenarios as food for thought and then just open it up? So, scenario one. I've captured five scenarios, which I believe are the, some of the alternatives that we have really been thinking through. Scenario one would be to add days off for Diwali, Lunar New Year and Eid al Fitr that we would keep Yom Kippur and Good Friday as days off, as we currently have. Just to name, I have Yom Kippur listed here, but we know that when Yom Kippur falls on a weekend, we then instead are taking a day off for the first day of Rosh Hashanah. But, basically scenario one would add those days off, not remove days off, either for the holidays we haven't- either for the holidays we currently have or attempt to remove days off. We have the Friday before Labor Day and the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. This is a theme we already looked at within our survey data. A lot of questions coming up about those two days in particular. We know that those two days in particular are in our contracts. If we were trying to change those and have school on one or both of those days, we would have to bargain that in negotiation. For scenario one, this would result in the longest school day, sorry, longest school year, where the earliest we would end school would be June 22nd, and we always have to account for five snow days. That could take us really late into June. The second scenario is to add additional holidays, keep the holidays we already have, but also try to go back to school on the Friday before Labor Day and the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which a lot of folks were suggesting we do, but again, as bold, it's pending bargaining contract negotiations. So we're on scenario two now, sorry. Okay. So that would, you know, have the last day be prior to Juneteenth. And sort of roughly similar to what we have now. Scenario three would be to remove Yom Kippur and Good Friday as days off. Can you move to scenario three, please? To maintain the current days off on those other two days, but not to make other changes. And then scenario four would be to basically not have, again, remove Yom Kippur and Good Friday as days off, not add additional holidays for religious or cultural holidays, but to try to go to school on those other days. Again, that results in the earliest possible last day of school. And finally, scenario five would just be to not change anything, which would be a rather interesting place to end up after all of this discussion. But that's where that would be. I hope that I have not further complicated things here. I just, I hope that gives us like some parameters to think about. And I really would like to just, you could maybe stop sharing the screen and we can just open it up and welcome whatever thoughts, questions you all have. And I think this is an important discussion, so what, whatever time we need. You can see, you know, where I'm ultimately hoping to get in our motions is that, you know, we can arrive at a motion that moves us forward in the process, but that is really flexible depending on this discussion. So I'll stop there.
I'll start with thank you. For pulling all this together. And I think the framing at the beginning as well that it's not an easy task to take on because we have heard so much and there, you know, there is a lot of varied opinions. And I appreciate sort of the, the thought to the various scenarios that we have before us. And there could be, you know, you know, an alternate scenario, of course.
Thank you for me having that.
Yeah, there could be others that could emerge from the conversation. So I do, I do want to say that. And I'll stop there for now and let my colleagues chime in first.
Well, I'm also going to say thank you, Lizzie, for pulling this together because I think the process that you went through to put this together, which I was actually reminded at the beginning of Citizens Day today. So I appreciate thoughtfulness that you've put into this process that hasn't been done before. And so I recognize this was a lot of work on your part to do this, but I appreciate it. And it's really nice for us to kind of see all of that information compiled here in front of us and this, this, as difficult as a decision as it is, it kind of makes it a little bit more like approachable, like I feel like we can come to a decision on it. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I did have a question on scenario three, where it says remove Yom Kippur and Good Friday. Are those part of contract negotiations or is that not part of that? Like if we were to go ahead and do that?
I mean, there are different realities for contract negotiations depending on the day. For Good Friday, it's in the AFSMI contract and the Unit D contract as a day off. So it, the, the negotiation around those days would be different, that that day would be different than the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and the Friday before Labor Day, because those are for all staff and those are, have a different kind of context. What we'd have to do for Good Friday, we would have to figure out a way to work with both of those units and, and essentially give them another day off somewhere else. So it would be like a, we'd have to look at the calendar and kind of figure out what that would be like. The other two are within the Unit A contract that you know, we won't have school on those days. And so and there's a history to the Friday before Labor Day when we decided to move from starting school after Labor Day to before. That was one of the concessions that was made in negotiations. So I, I don't know in terms of engaging in those conversations, what if, if the thought has changed on those over the last, I don't know how, is it a decade? Know how, when, when we moved from free to, or post to free, at least a decade, right? And I think the Wednesday, from what I understand, the Wednesday is also something that is, has not always been so. We did have like a half day on Wednesday at, at some point in the past. But it could, it could be a while ago.
I have a question. Because for February vacation and April vacation is always anchored on Presidents' Day and
Patriots' Day.
But then for winter break is not, there's no clear cut of when do we start and when do we end? And that is a big question. So I'm looking at the next three school years. Assuming we started on the, on December 24th and comes back on January 2nd. It will work for the next three school years to have two full weekends off.
I think that's generally the goal of the winter recess, which is the longest break of the year. So it's the only break that lasts for longer than one week. And I think that is the general practice, not just in Milton, but in is to try to provide that as roughly a week and a half off total.
So my question is, should we have some clear wording on when this winter breaks supposed to start and supposed to end? So that in the future, we would not run into the problem of like, oh, last year we have a two, four weekend, this year we only have one.
Well, we, we think about that. So where we look at the winter break and we look at where, you know, essentially you have to look at where the holidays fall, right? And you're going to, you're going to bridge the two holidays and then you have to look at, is it going to go this direction or this direction to get those times? So if you look at this year, where we're coming back to school, we have a full week off. And then we have three, three days off. We come back for two. Whereas next year, it falls, if you look at the calendar, it falls more the other way because it really doesn't make sense to come back for one day, for a Friday. Our attendance would be really, really poor. And that's one of the other metrics in figuring these things out is if, if no one's going to be there, you're, you're wasting a, a learning day, right? So it probably makes sense to take off that Friday and extend to the right side. Next, yes. So don't come back Friday, January 2nd, but just go all the way through and then be in school for, and, and some districts will take off the full two weeks in that context. That's not uncommon. But we could also come back for, you know, I would suggest being in school for the first part of that week and then off for that week and a half.
I think which brings up that question around Christmas Eve Day. You know what I mean? It's not a holiday. I mean, it's, you understand why it's from a convenience state standpoint, I guess, why people take it off. But if you're looking at that, like to your point, if you looked at next year, the 22nd is a Monday, Christmas Day is Thursday. So you're not going to take that whole week off. That doesn't make sense to take the whole week off. But then what is the determination of what the what that added day is? And I guess that's one of the questions I had in, in looking at it from the standpoint of, I guess not philosophically, I don't know how else to put it, but like what is the, what is the rationale that you use, that we use for what days are off, right? So I mean, ultimately is it, is it, okay, federal holidays are given and then we are, is it, then are we, do we then say that's that next level of do you acknowledge related holidays? Or is it because I think that's where now we get into the if so, then what? Right? Like to what degree do you do it? And so I don't know if that's a filter by which districts do it. And you sort of, do you know what I mean? Like is there a, because then other ways, then it just starts getting murky because then it's a, we're doing this and then these, but not those. And so that's where I think the conversation, it's almost like if you have a, a line in it, on it, I mean, I'm saying this as if it's easy. I don't mean it that way, but it's almost like, do you, is that the filter? Is it like it's federal holidays and then?
Well, and it is the layer you just referenced is, and I mean, I think in doing some of the research around other communities that have taken different approaches, we have observed that sometimes they do run into challenges when they remove a day off and call that a school day, but then cannot staff the building on that school day, let alone student attendance. So that's where the philosophical, which I think is important, very valid and important because we do have a a lens on this conversation is about equity and, you know, wanting to have a fair approach. And also the, the question has been raised about Christmas Eve and whether that should be a school day, knowing that Christmas is the federal holiday, along with New Year's Day, of course. But I think that is a question we would have to confront would be, would we be able to staff our buildings on, if we had school on Christmas Eve and chose to not begin winter recess until Christmas Day?
Or if our demographics are different. If you have it a primarily Latin American, you know, student base, you wouldn't have attendance on Christmas. Right? Because in a lot of places, the celebration happens. Not Christmas Day. So therefore, you know, we would have to sort of weigh that differently.
Marky is a good word.
So I think when I come to this from the original impetus of the conversation, which was thinking about equity and belonging, then I would say that for me, scenario two, sort of, it's some of that, you know, not perfectly. But it does start getting us that, you know, if we, that's the lens we're going to use and that's how we're going to arrive at decisions, then it would be that. Or it would be, let's get rid of all the celebrations, right? All of them that are not required federally. And then, you know, make, make it so that we don't have Yom Kippur, we don't have Good Friday, and we don't add any additional, and we get to a much shorter school year. But that then starts to, you know, send another message, right? And so I feel like it's, you know, it's scenario four or scenario two. For me, scenario five doesn't feel like it's, it's really one we should, or I would entertain. So that's, that's where I'm at right now. So I just wanted to continue, maybe move the conversation.
So can I ask a question to see what you or others think? To just share that my own main, like a, a challenge I have in thinking about scenario two is just this concern that was raised around the growing diversity of our community and the recognition that we would not ever be able to take a day off for like every holiday that was even shared directly through our, through the survey. And so I don't know what to do with that because I think as we see even in adding these three holidays, which I do, I feel is a very noble attempt to try to be more inclusive of more members of our community. But to me, it also does send a message that like, if like we have taken this strong attempt to be more inclusive, we don't actually have like hard numbers to know actually how many students, staff members or families do these holidays represent proportionally? We have struggled and that's not our, that's a, that's a larger question about, you know, demographic data that's much bigger than this conversation. But it does give me pause because we're lengthening, you know, we're talking about keeping a long, a longer than most school, school year without achieving full inclusion. We might be closer to full inclusion, but I'm, I'm just going to say that's something that I'm sort of worried about because I'm also worried about, well, what happens? And, you know, I, I'm going to stop there actually because we can't, we can only worry about what we have right now and not future proof it per se, but what, are you all like thinking about that piece? Does anyone have insight around that that you could share to help me feel better about that?
So I agree with what you said. I mean, I think we're getting closer towards being inclusive by recognizing more holidays, but doesn't include everybody. So I'm going to use myself as an example. I was born in Kerala, India, which is down south. I grew up in Mumbai. We celebrated Diwali in Mumbai. We don't in Kerala. It's not as popular. We have a lot of other holidays. So technically, it doesn't represent me if I was a student, you know what I mean? So I think that's where we run into those challenges, right? Where, because cultural holidays are very complex. They could change by, by region, by state in India, for instance. So I think it gets very, I mean, I think I mentioned it at our, our listening session. So I think that's where it's challenging. I know like in, in one of the survey answers, someone mentioned Assyrian New Year, right? Like that's, it could be just a couple of members, but they're just as important, you know? It could be just a couple of members, but they're just as important, you know? So I think that's where we don't, we, I, I don't know. If as much as I like this, and I think we're heading in the right direction. I just don't know if we're completely being inclusive and what's our plan to see those students, you know? And I think that's where I don't have an answer.
I, I agree with that. I mean, I think that's, that it's a challenge I have as well. I think the other thing I look at is like we. We went out and asked for feedback from our community and the overwhelming response within the survey and with all the listening sessions. I, I was at, I think what I heard from us y'all is like not to add days. And I, when I cut the data to, there's, there's only one minority group where the majority of members actually want to add days, which is the Muslim. Group, which is, you know, obviously part, the original group that like brought this up. And so that also I, that I struggle with that a bit of. Like, you know, we were doing this to try and be responsive to a group that was asking about the inequity in terms of how we're treating Abrahamic religions. That group overwhelmingly within the survey data is asking for us to add days. Everyone else within the community is, you know, majority within each of those groups as I, I cut it up. Is asking us to say, just remove days, don't add more days, don't extend the year. So like, how do you balance those things, right? I don't like, how do you balance the like creating a tyranny of the majority? Versus ignoring the voices of almost eighty percent of the people that, you know, we asked and that took the time to share and. Like to say like, yeah, we know all of you wanted this, but like, we're actually not, we're not gonna do it. So like both those things. Don't feel great.
I, I agree with what you guys just shared and, um. One of the community member also emailed us with a sample of Franklin Public School calendar. And in their calendar, it's not necessary that they recognize all the religious holidays of their school demographic. But they do list, uh, all the holidays that. People might observe, like for example, what, what is, um. Chinese New Year, what is Ash, uh, Ash Wednesday, like what is Ramadan? And when is it? What was the significance? I think that's more educational and it makes more sense. So looking at the scenario that. You, you work so hard to put together. I agree that if we go back to scenario number five, which we make no changes. And keep the schedule as this year, it does not make any sense. After we've have done all those thinking and touring around this district. Scenario number four speaks stronger to me because. But, but I do worry about the staffing part because I'm looking at the survey data. We do have forty-five percent for Catholic in the district that we, according to the survey data that we have, um, get back. So I'm not sure, as you said, how many of these datas are from, um. Students or teachers in, or staff in the district. So what if you don't have enough staff to, to run the school day? Right? Or if you have very low attendance of students on this school day? So, but. We don't know what we don't know until we really. Going through it, right? So if, if it's really that important, people do, will still take the day off. So for example, I do set my family celebrate Lunar New Year, Chinese New Year. And similar to Christmas, we, the, the night before is more important than the day itself. Because the night before is the reunion dinner. The day itself, we start with like, um, different area in China, we will have different customs. But in my area, we, we eat vegetarian food to start off the new year, like cleansing your body to start off fresh. But as a student going through the public school system in Boston, I never take that day off. Because I worry that I might miss some like important stuff and stuff like that. But as a, as, as a working person nowadays, I do take that day off. Because I could, you know, um. It really depends on like what your position is at the time. So I, I, if I'm a student in this school right now, I most likely will still come to school. Because I will celebrate with my family at, in, uh, on New Year's Eve, right? Same as I'm, this Christmas Eve, you will celebrate with your family. So, but if, if it's the staffed. Who are a majority of the data survey from. If they are, if the forty-five percent Catholics are majority of staff and faculty member in the school district, then we will not have enough people to run the school.
Assuming that everyone's practicing. We did, it, what, the, if you broke the cert, the data of. Staff. Down, right, Mark? It was, I think the majority of staff were indicating a preference to not extend the school year. But. I think what you just raised was, is really important. It's a good reminder also that each of these holidays is very different. I mean, we know, for example, that. For Jewish people who are celebrating Yom Kippur, that, that is different. That is a day spent in synagogue through the day. So that is different from a holiday that's predominantly celebrated in the evening, for example. Um, but I like, I, I, I wanna highlight something you also just, I think alluded to, which for me is. As important, if not more important than the discussion about the actual days, which is no matter what we decide with the calendar, what. I hope we can really. Commit to building a better system for inclusion. And accommodation for people who are celebrating holidays, especially if we move in the direction of taking, uh, fewer days off. But even if we add days off, knowing that we still won't, um. That we still won't be taking a day off for every holiday that everybody might celebrate. So I think that other districts have. Done more and we can follow some examples about having, for example, clearer policies around no homework. Clearer policies around athletic practices and just very. Clear guidelines that support our staff. In making sure that those accommodations are consistent. Because that's the message we've heard very commonly, like from ma- many different places through this process is that. It's currently been inconsistent and inadequate. And along with that would be a system of requesting the personal day for if you're an employee. Like, for example, you're talking about the example of Good Friday, like would there be a system to? Or ask faculty to, and staff to like say, by a certain time, like far enough ahead, I intend to take that. Uh, day as a. Personal, like religious holiday. There, the point is like, we could solve for that. I think that there are things that could be put in place to. Um, do our best to like. Find sub-coverage well in advance or to make accommodations to combine classes or whatnot as needed for a given day. But those pieces are all the, the things that are like floating in this space of the discussion. Which kind of will fall on the district to implement. You know, after the calendar is set and then those new. And there may be some changes to our policies that will be required as well, uh, but we can keep looking at that as we kind of. Go forward.
Yeah, in one of, following what you just said, in one of the district I worked at before, also public school district. The day before Thanksgiving or before any holiday, you cannot take that day off. You cannot request a, a day off on that day. It's, it's by the, the contract policy. And also like, um. If there's more than like twenty percent of the, this, the building people are out, are requesting out on certain day. Um, they will not grant that all, all the requests. So they, they're limiting like each day you can only have like that ten people out or twenty people out. To make sure the school can still function without you. Oh, that being said is that, is it possible, is it possible that all those like PSAT tests could be scheduled on, on the day that? A lot of people might wanted to take it off. No, it doesn't work. It doesn't work. Yeah.
So I do wanna make a comment about athletics. I know it's come up, but I think with not having enough facilities and just. Athletics becoming so competitive. That they get scheduled, right? So it's hard. I mean, I just heard of like there's hockey on Christmas Eve. So. So I think that's very challenging to actually make happen because there's, you know, I know like even in the spring when there's like fields are limited and we don't have enough. Facilities, I think it makes it really challenging to say, oh, there was no going to be no any, no practice or games that day.
Or even to. Recognize that a student, like one student might not show up to practice because of a holiday where others, do you know what I mean? Like to just, and have that be. I don't know. I think there's a definitely a different mentality when it comes to athletics that it's sort of like, okay, there's the written policy and then there's the accepted.
And we, we heard a lot of that.
Yeah, we heard a lot of it.
A lot of it concerns around not practices that, you know, are sort of make unofficial that make a student feel like I can't miss, right?
And there's a lot of pressure at that age, like, you know, all of these are important to. You know, a, as an adult, like we're looking at this calendar and saying, oh my gosh, this is so important. But as a child, if you think of like a twelve or thirteen year old, they have other things that are their priorities, not ours, that are not the same as ours.
Along with the policy or guidelines or however that will end up looking to support. Accommodations and. Um, excuse absences and whatnot. I think, you know, the other part of that, which is not for tonight, but which is a conversation going forward is something we had. Begun to think about. Um, and will need to continue, you know, you'll work with your team about. Those ideas of, um. Like expanding opportunities for learning in school in appropriate ways. But where it's more consistent, we available, you know, across our elementary schools, for example, or. So just to name that that's like another thing that we want to do, including for holidays, cultures. Um, that have never had a day off, you know, but which are also good and important to. Raise awareness about and appreciation for. So that's a larger initiative and I think that also connects back to our public comment speaker for tonight, you know? Like what are ways that we can meaningfully like celebrate and raise awareness for all the different. Ethnic and cultural groups that live in Milton, um. That's a large, that's, that's an ongoing conversation and. You know, I think you'll be continuing to work on that through this year, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Something that FA and I have been working on.
And I think like on that note, um, I know we had received an email earlier this last week about. The human rights, uh, celebration of human rights, you know, so something that we might think is with good intention could. Might not have the same effect on someone. So when we kind of look at things through that lens as we build consistency across. What is shared across our six schools and, uh, you know, just wanna make sure that we're touching on that just so that everyone feels safe and included, you know, in our buildings. So.
So what are we doing?
Not sure if this is the right time to bring it up, um, since you're mentioning about like a district-wide cultural celebrations. Mutem Mosaic, I'm part of the, um, the API neighbors group. Um, we are trying to do one celebrate, celebration event per month. Um, celebrating all the cultures that we have in this town. So for example, in, in September, we did a moon festival. In October, we, uh, have the Italian Heritage Month. And November, we have that out of November. I don't remember. But, but we do have the Lunar New Year's celebration coming up, um, original planning for January, but, uh, because of like. Schedule wise, we, we are doing it early February instead. So tentatively scheduled on February eighth. Saturday, five to seven P A, P M at the PH Middle School. So as a district, district wife, we, we do see that different school does different kinds of. Teaching or education around. Cultural, culture and holidays itself. And some school does more, like for example, Colicca has an annual Lunar New Year's celebration. An annual, uh, cultural day celebration in June. But not all the schools in our town does that. So our students do have different experience coming into, uh, middle and high school. So that, that is one reason why we, the Mutem Mosaic wanted to do, um, collaborations on this part. So we will hope to collaborate with the school district and all the residents in town to. Make events more successful and more accessible. Uh, and well-funded. So just, just a little plug in here.
I think it's really great that you're doing that. And thank you for letting us know the dates. Hope to be there.
Well, what, once everything is set in stone, I will send out flyers. So watch out for the emails.
Going back to the calendar. I would like to say that I haven't moved from scenario two and scenario four. And even taking into account sort of what we heard because scenario two does not necessarily make the school year longer. Than it currently is. Until Mother Nature does what Mother Nature does and that we can't, you know, control. And the other in terms of scenario four, then I think if we can't, we're not gonna add. Then I think we need to face a really hard decision, which is remove. Because what's our rationale for keeping Yom Kippur and Good Friday? But not add any others. Um, and this one would definitely. Respond to the folks who say we want a shorter school year. Great. Okay, we're not gonna add anymore. The other one adds, but it also takes away. So that we get to a similarly, you know, end of school year. So that's where I think it's a hard decision. It's where do we wanna sort of go? And to this question of sort of, you know, it's not inclusive of everybody. It's not, and it never will be. So I would, I'm not gonna use an idiom because I always get them wrong. I am an immigrant, get them wrong. And English is my second language, so I'm not gonna use that. But I'm not gonna sort of throw away an, an alternative, right? For just because it's not perfect. And it isn't. Um, but I do sort of, and I think in terms of the survey, I do sit with the fact that it was not representative. Of our district. Um, and I do wanna sort of sit with those who, the minority in that, that were sort of encouraging us to add. Um, so I, I sit with that tension. That's more, the more with that tension that I sit with. Um, but I do still see that those are the two scenarios that I'm contemplating, um, still.
I mean, I, I do agree that I think scenario one is practically infeasible. Even just from the standpoint of our student learning experiences in classrooms exceeding ninety degrees. For we, more than a week plus. That would be reasonable to just anticipate that. To me, that doesn't make sense with our primary responsibility being. To like ensure that our students can be learning. And I don't think, I don't think it's feasible to. Anticipate a possible last day of June twenty ninth. I mean. So I all, I, I don't personally consider that scenario viable. I also agree that scenario five. Is not something I'm interested in, um, supporting either. The idea of. The idea of, I think, where scenario three, like, quite honestly, what I think about that scenario is just a way to almost be prepared for the reality of a negotiations process. You know, in that scenario two does depend upon the successful negotiation of adding those other two days back as working days. And again, these scenarios are not be all end all, like it could be possible potentially to add one, but not both. You know, um, maybe we go back to have a half day the day before Thanksgiving, but we still have the Friday before Labor Day as a, as a day off, like these are all possible. But scenario three is in there as a, you know, it kind of does part of what scenario four does. But it also doesn't, it's not as like uh, much hinging upon negotiations. But it's, you know, all that's just to say, I, I'm with you. I, I, I'm really, I feel torn between these um, two approaches and, you know, I also, in addition to everything you just articulated sitting with, which I also, it's also what you said, Mark, about, you know, when we asked for feedback and we got feedback and it wasn't fully representative, but it wasn't, it was not fully, it, it was not like totally non-representative.
No, no, for sure, for sure.
Did have pretty good representation of many, uh, like elements of our community.
I also think that in our conversations, though, in the conversations that we had, it was, don't add if the year gets longer.
That's true.
Right? So it wasn't just, don't add. It was just, don't add if that means I'm going to be, you know, the kids are going to be there until the end of June.
That is how it would be.
I think that is something that's important to take into account.
Absolutely.
So it, it wouldn't be going against what we heard. It just, we heard you, we're not going to add and then.
We're not doing a scenario.
Right. It makes, yeah, exactly, right.
That's a really good point. Another thing we heard too is, was about um, just the trophiness.
Right, I was gonna say that.
And the sort of, a lot, I mean, numerous times it's raised, like how few full weeks we have since, like we have months where we have like one or two full school weeks between holidays and professional development. And so that's the other, that's another piece to it, which you know, is, I know you're going to be considering how to possibly make the professional learning time like more predictable or somehow like at least have some um, way of bringing consistency to that as a schedule. Um, but that is, like, as you look at adding, for example, if we're going to keep like adding Diwali is another day off in the fall. And anyway, just sort of, that's, that's a consideration, that's just.
And that was, I did, you know, that was something that was in a lot of the comments that people made. And then I think similarly of the the issue, you know, obviously it's not across the board, but if you think about like the absenteeism, right, getting kids to school. Like the more broken up the week is, the more days that you have off, the harder it is to gain attraction of those kids coming to school. So I know it's not the reason to do it, but I, I do think these that, that sense of consistency and that, that as parent and as parents being able to, you know, have time off, like that's, those are, those are factors as well to consider because these aren't days off.
Oh, absolutely. Like childcare for people, that's, that's, yeah.
I did want to ask, I know, I think it was at the Glover Site Council presentation, you mentioned like when you have an early dismissal day, the actual amount of time that they get to collaborate and do work is only an hour or so.
Yeah.
Um, so is there a way to perhaps have more full days versus these half days and make less, like so less interruption, I guess? I don't know if there's a way to do that. Just because.
I mean, right now, we don't have, I mean, I think if you did a comparative analysis to other district PD schedules were pretty thin overall, and having two days and then the five, essentially five is what's split over two. So five half days. We have issues right now that we have to figure out with our half days that are not working where we want them to. So that's like something that we are working on, hopefully for next year to make those better. I do think as we hire a new assistant superintendent of teaching and learning and as, as we kind of hit the ground with all the work that we're doing in our action teams, we start building things, we'll have a better idea of what we need and then balancing that with the needs in the community because I, I, I mean, I've always had this, this, there's a tension between the challenges that parents face with professional development time, it's really hard. And then the impact on a school district when you have no professional learning time. If, if you want to try to build towards fidelity of anything, like any kind of systems development takes brain people together to, to do that work. So it's unfortunately, like our, our construct is such that it's, we're kind of in between, like trying to do both of those things well. So I, I don't think, I, I don't think we're there yet at all. And I think I agree that we have to be mindful of that. When we have that time, we have to really make.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, fully agree.
I think from my perspective, like there, I think other calendar and conversations that can be had, should be had as we look at like an actual draft calendar, I think. And from my perspective, within this conversation, really addressing the the point around the removal of these two uh, religious holidays or the addition of the three religious holidays should be like our outcome of this discussion. And that even is a reason why I, I think the conversation around Labor Day and the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I think it's helpful to like see the impact within like a scenario and like what happens if we, we don't get this, but we know those are, I think to a point you made, like we know they're dependent on collective bargaining. We can't make that unanimously. And I think we can assume, like we can continue those conversations in the future about whether or not we want to have those days potentially, given they don't have religious connotation. I always struggle a bit with trading a full day of learning for a half day of learning on a Wednesday. But again, I think that's like a separate conversation really from like what we're talking about. I, I think the goal of this in terms of the equity conversation here. I think if folks are, if we're like talking about scenarios, I think for me, it's more a scenario three or four, that essentially just kind of assumes one of the two things will occur with Labor Day and the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I personally have really strong feelings at all about Labor Day, one way or the other, uh, the Friday before Labor Day, I should say, and the Wednesday, I think it's a, again, just for the conversation, but I think for me, it comes to like, you know, I think people make personal choices. I think cultural and religious practices are deeply personal and really important personal choices. Uh, I think like a decision to have a holiday or not have a holiday is not an indication that those days don't matter. And in the same way where I have like conversations with the family and students about like who take personal days away from school for funerals, for weddings, like for really important family uh, and personal events that happen. And like we say, please go, like this is great. And so I think those things will continue, will always exist, will continue to exist, and there's no reason, no way we're, we'll be able to excuse all of them. Um, and I think if we get back to the point, like the idea of like, currently, we're not treating the Abrahamic religions equally. How can we, how can we make an equitable decision? I think it's about like not prioritizing a personal first, uh, particular personal choice within our calendar as a, as a school district. Uh, and allowing families to make that determination as they, you know, practice or don't practice certain things. I think the other piece to me is like, I deeply like our mission is to educate students, and I think students will learn more by being in the building and like developing a more rigorous like curriculum of study around these days and learning about these days versus being off for the days. I, I just, I believe that very deeply. I think, I think that's also what we heard from our students when we asked our students. And so I, I think that is, in my opinion, the best way to spread knowledge and like the, the best impact we can make as a school district. And then again, I just think the, the survey data is, well, might not be completely reflective. It's just like eight out of ten people to ask them to agree on anything is really hard, and that's what we have here. And over that eighty-four percent of all respondents who self-identified in a minority racial or ethnic group, uh, you know, chose to or uh, were favorable in the response of like, we should reduce the number of days off. And I, I hear you completely, Selena, around like how we framed it. I think that's, that's fair potential criticism of the survey. I will say within like the question itself that we ask, we say just Milton Public School should reduce the number of days off for cultural and religious holidays that are not federally recognized while allowing for excuse absences for those who do celebrate a given holiday. So within that question, we don't say anything about like shortening or extending the school year. It's just that statement. I think we did talk about that within like the context at the top of the survey and certainly within the one-off, or I mean, the um, in-person conversations, I know it came up, but um, within, again, within that question, I just think the responses is overwhelming across, again, every group, every religious group you cut through, every ethnic group you cut through, a, as I said, with, with the exception of the Muslim community, which I, I don't take for, for granted, but um, I suppose upon kind of that broad support, I, I would be in favor of a motion to remove the Yom Kippur and Good Friday as days off.
I have a question on this particular one. Have we looked at any data on if there's a Monday holiday? What is the attendance rate on the Friday before? Just curious about Labor Day. As a potential, like if we were to go full day.
I mean, I think it might be, I don't have the data off, off my head, but I'm not sure. Different Fridays are going to have different impacts, I would think, like that Labor Day weekend is. I, I don't, I mean, just because I'm not like steep, steeped in the, the culture of this four-day Labor Day, because I've only had it a year now. I don't know how strong it is for people in terms of like if they would, if that, if it's a thing, right? If it's a thing or not, so. Uh, we could definitely get that data though.
Um, I was just curious, like, yeah, for instance, if there's a Monday holiday for like anything, would people take Friday off just because if they're traveling or make a long weekend out of it, like what is, what is the attendance um, data? The, I mean, the other option, I do like scenario three. Um, I think that makes sense. Um, I would like to see like a scenario three B that says half day before Thanksgiving, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and still maintaining Labor Day, the Friday before Labor Day as a day off, just as another alternate, if that, you know, as, just so that we can shorten that day one more.
One complication with those two days.
Yeah.
With the Friday for Labor Day and the Wednesday for Thanksgiving is that we're going to have to build something into the calendar in January when we, when you all read the calendar.
Yeah.
But the negotiations may not be that quick.
Not being great.
So this may be a long-term thing, not a short-term.
Yep. Yeah, and then I think, I think in order to be, Mark, you made some really good points about scenario three. Which definitely.
Could I add a, a three B dot too? I guess the same question would be about Labor Day because a half day still counts if you it's a school day, correct? So if you did that Friday before Labor Day as a half day, because then people are still, because I think that was the thing, like, I know as a parent, you're like, oh, great, we're, you came back, we're there for two days, then we're off for a day, then we're, you know, at least then if you got, you can go, you know, you can go, you can still go away for the long weekends. Here, if it's a half day for people. It doesn't feel like you came back from whatever vacation you were on, only to come home for two days and then, you know, I don't know, just like sometimes it just having that extra bit of time feels a little bit more worthwhile. But again, that's a, that's a nuanced piece of the conversation. But I think I'm in that, the same camp as scenario three. But in that, I, I just, I do struggle with going, to your point, you know, the survey did, that was pretty overwhelmingly, people saying they weren't looking to add days. So all, I, you know, I don't need to belabor what you said, but so that's where you know, I do struggle with the, the reason why the we were asked to go through this, you know, was in order to do that, but I think having done the survey and getting responses from people is helpful. So this, where I'm.
And I do really like what Franklin did with their calendar, with having those explanations, because I think that's another part of that original request to be seen. And I think that's a good starting point to what we would like to see as a district do in terms of recognizing cultures, right? But I think that's a good step in the right direction where we're identifying and maybe, maybe there's a way to kind of track student data to see, like, make sure that all the holidays, and it could be really long, but I think it's important, you know, and I think it, it really, having that explanation is also helpful because like, wow, this is great, you know, even for me looking at it, you know, so I just, I just think that's, it's really helpful. I know it doesn't make our calendar on one page anymore, but it's.
Just decide the second page.
I will.
Well, effort to do better with that P, that, you know, which is something we've talked about. We just haven't done it yet, but you are saying that we are doing it. So, yeah. So that um, to me, that makes a difference and that it's only with confidence in that commitment that I feel comfortable to contemplate scenario three or four. I don't feel comfortable with the idea of removing days off and not
Right.
responding to the request for additional days off. I, I would not feel comfortable for going down that path.
No.
With status quo elsewhere, like I think the only way to contemplate that as any type of a meaningful step in a good direction for, for equity and inclusion in our diverse community, it, it's only with the commitment undergirding it. But that's a leap of faith. Cause we don't know what that will end up looking like.
And I think that's a commitment that all of us need to make too, you know, to make sure. I mean, it's, it's so great that Val has taken the lead on this, you know, her efforts to create things. And I think we as a district and us at this table should support those efforts and expand on them and see how we can incorporate more of that. You know, um, community-wide and, you know, with Peter's help, district-wide, you know, I think that's so I think we have to commit to that. So it's not just on paper, but we are working towards that, I think.
So I'm going to voice something that I'm struggling with. And I'm thinking of our Jewish population. And how we got to recognizing Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah. How did we get there? And it was an effort to try to be inclusive, to see the diversity in our town. And it's, I feel like it just, we're taking that win away.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so I want to name it. And that doesn't mean that there is sort of like the perfect, again, scenario that's going to add and I. And I hear sort of this comment of like, you know, Mark's comment of personal choice, et cetera. And I, I'm struggling with that. I'm, I'm really struggling with sort of just. Turning our eye away from inclusivity. And sense of belonging and I, I just, I just want to voice that. I'm, I'm really wrestling with that. Because it's almost like we're undoing work. That some of our, you know, fellow residents did to get to the point where the high holiday for the Jewish community was recognized. And I think there must have been a compromise along the way, say, okay, you get yours and I get mine. And maybe I'm simplifying it, which I'm sure I am, but I just, I'm struggling with that.
Yeah, there's a sense of. Like you're saying, taking away a, a win or what was. What was progress, meaningful progress, actually. Because of a sense that it's not possible to extend that same win or progress to. Other groups. And I do think that. You know, with the original, for this round of the conversation request regarding Eid. You know, that was, that was all that was requested. That was one, that was Milton Muslim neighbors that came forward with that request. And they were not concerned with Diwali or Lunar New Year. They were concerned with Eid. And that was framed as the question of the, you know, the Abrahamic religions, the three sort of similar. Judaism, Christianity and Islam that should be similarly recognized in our calendar. And I. In how I interpret what you just said, I felt that. In that request, in that conversation. It was not a, a request to take something away from someone else, but rather to just extend. The same recognition of, of one day off. And then it became more complex. Last year, when the question then was raised, well. What about these additional two holidays?
Right.
Which go beyond Abrahamic religions and extend to two other cultural ethnic groups that, you know, are growing in size within Milton. And that's how we're here now. But I think in articulating what you're struggling with. That's why this is so hard. I don't want to sit here and be in a position of. Like making anyone feel. Disrespected, certainly not. And I appreciate how you just said that. So listen, I'm not sure what, where we're at with this. I would like to remind us that it is. Again, the goal is, is just to sort of. Recommend. An approach and. It definitely may not be that we all agree on that. The goal would be to get to an approach that then. You are able to sort of consider in your. Taking us to the next and. You know, the next phase of this process, which. Depending on what happens relating to negotiations, like may actually not be resolved in, in January. But I think it is, it is a fair point that, like even if we were to say we're leaning towards scenario two, for example. If that's really what we're leaning towards, I guess we need to be prepared to accept scenario one. On some level, right? Yeah.
Right, because it's soon coming down.
No, I mean, I, I think that you also just named something, right? We could just add Eid.
Well, that was where we started out. That was where we were a year ago. That was where we were a year ago and then. I think in a totally well-intentioned. Like progression of that discussion, we looked at. Like, well, if we're trying to be inclusive, let's not stop with Eid. Well, I think. Let's continue to, and we did receive some feedback from our community about that. Not a lot. But we did get, we did get some. So, yeah, but that's, that's like, again, these scenarios are not the. Be all end all, and if that's, if that's something that, that, you know, someone can put, where we're ending up here is someone's going to make a motion. To just put forward what you want us to do, you know? That's kind of.
But I guess what I struggle with that is, I think. It's really, okay, a group needs to come forward and request a holiday and then do we do it for?
Yeah.
You know, and that's challenging because it might not be a big group, but like, how are we recognizing, right? Like, so. For instance, like Val's doing a celebration for Lunar New Year. She's not coming before us and saying we need a holiday for this. So does that make her holiday not, less important?
Right? No.
Right?
Exactly. That's right.
I just found that on that seed, they have a statewide legal holiday list. I would suggest that we just follow those legal holiday lists for the days off. Which does not include. Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, or Good Friday, or Eid. It's Le, it's Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year. Martin Luther King's Jr. Day. President's Day, Patriot's Day, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, and Independence Day.
Yeah, it's like the federal holidays plus Patriots' Day.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
I guess that's where my question started in the sense, and not, not saying that it was the right or the wrong thing, but it almost. I guess that's the, it, it does become difficult to your point. I mean, there's the, there are the holidays that have. Religious holidays that have been there because they've always been in there, right? And then. As a community, as a country, we've become so much more diverse and. I think that it. And this isn't me saying one is right or wrong, but it's almost like. To avoid the murky, like, do you have just, is that, is there a policy that is just. These are the holidays, you know, the federal holidays are the ones that we have to follow. And I, I recognize, you know, that's where. You say like. The ability to have staffing, you know, but even within that, I feel like there were comments from people who, and it's going to range, but even like with Good Friday. A lot of, you know, there were comments like, yes, I, I'm Catholic, but a good, I, you know, I can, I go, I don't have, have Good Friday off. Or there's some things, so I, so, you know, is that too strict? And then that's pulling more away, but I, just I think. It, it feels like, I didn't realize I'm so much this person, but like sort of like there, like rules or like there are guidelines for it and then it does become. It's just like if it doesn't fit the guidelines, does it? Then it's, then to your point, if somebody asks for something to come forward.
Do we automatically grant that?
Yeah, or you don't. Do you know what I mean? And I know I'm, I. And that might be too strict, but it just, and it, it's.
Well, and I think there are districts, right? And it doesn't mean it's perfect and I don't know enough to say Brooklyn's working perfectly. But Brooklyn, Brooklyn, Brookline has categories of, it's, it's by categories, right? And it's the, what they're doing is category one, category two, category three. Category one, it's because absences by staff and students impact the ability to conduct classes on this date and during this time. Therefore, it is a day off.
Right.
Whereas if it's lands in category two, school remains in session because the holidays are not considered to be a day of low attendance. However, they are still celebrated by a significant portion of the school population. So if we had that level of data, right, to look into it.
Yes.
Then we could categorize the holidays by that and then determine.
Yeah.
Right, but, and then, yeah, I didn't even understand it. Obviously, that's a different way and we still need to give some guidance, I think, for twenty-two, for the next school year. Doesn't mean it's going to be the perfect.
Right.
So. I almost.
Yeah, because it almost takes the. The. How to put this? Takes the religious component out of it.
Correct.
Makes it about.
Impacting.
It's an impact.
Right. Learning, impacting learning, right?
Yeah, I really like those categories.
Me too.
Yeah. The Brookline though has both Jewish holidays off. And that's also something that came up in a listening session of like, why one, not the other? And it's because of this. Bargaining that occurred at some point, right, that none of us were part of, but like. But that's another piece too, that we are not talking about within these considerations, but, right, and there's also two Eids.
I mean, could we do a trial run and see what the feedback is and collect some data and revisit it? I mean, I don't know.
So I think I would put a motion to say that we amend the calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six and insert Eid. And re, and do not remove any other holidays and pending negotiations. Listen to what this, a lot of folks said, which is have us come in on Thanksgiving half a day. And Labor Day was kind of, I think it was somewhere in the middle. And folks who are like, you know, three days of school would probably be better than two days of school. And then that would get us to an earlier. End of the school year. I don't have it perfect. The motions are perfect yet.
But is part of what you're saying then to pursue the Brookline data gathering?
Data gathering, so we can see, you know. You know, we might find that Eid, it doesn't really get, you know. I mean, Eid, I just feel like we need to listen to that. But Good Friday, if we all of a sudden got rid of Good Friday. I don't know, there's just different ways of looking at it.
You collect data though, if you don't. If there's, like if those days are holidays, you would never be able to track attendance on those days.
Yeah, no, you're right. No, so that doesn't work.
We already have it. I think, but again, I think we talked about this last year when we talked about this and I brought up the whole idea of like, yeah, we shouldn't. Have a day of school, again, a point you brought up here, shouldn't have a day of school, nobody's going to show up, right? That's just, that is against like what our process here. I think a point that was brought up, I forget by who, but very valid is like, well, should it, like if we limit it just based upon like, there's enough of a population within town, right? How, what does that mean, right? And then you get into a little bit of the tyranny of the majority, right? And like, I. I think we have a very important Muslim population in this town. I cannot find any data on the Muslim population Milton, we don't, that doesn't exist, right? We know what it is within the state, right, which is like under two percent. We know what other populations are within the town too. Like, I, I would not guess that the Muslim population is like nearly the size of the Asian population, which is almost six percent of the town, right? And like other communities. If that's what we're thinking about and again, impacts of days of attendance, but like those are the things again, I just, I struggle with again, like then you're doing, you're doing math around like, what is the size that matters? Within the population. I think these are all conversations, again, we struggled with last year and talked about and like are coming back to because they're.
That, that returns to the question of the, the Abrahamic religions as one point of consistency. And then maybe the data around. Impact of attendance. For holidays that go beyond.
My thought is like, I like, I agree, I like the categories. I like the idea of like not necessarily. Saying what we're going to do is absolutely the right thing and like, let's collect data on it and we can look at it. But I do think if, the only way to collect data on student attendance is to have students in the building and so in that case. In my mind, the only thing that would make sense would be to remove the two days for next year. Look at what the attendance was across kind of any and all of these holidays. And say, you know, both staff attendance and student attendance and then say like, hey, was this a problem? From an attendance perspective, which again, is only one lens, it's not, doesn't necessarily get to kind of some of the other. I don't think Muslim neighbors was coming and saying, hey, there's a real attendance problem within your school district. That's why we need to stay off. It was again, about the recognition. And so it does not get to that.
Raising awareness.
But there is like, again, we could create these different categories and.
I'm mindful of time.
Yeah.
I am. I strongly believe that we have invested in this discussion. It's not something to brush through right now. So I think this has been a good discussion. We do still have things we need to get to, a few other agenda items. So I'm wondering, you started to.
I don't have one.
Okay.
I don't know if folks want to table this for next meeting. I won't make a motion, but if like folks would like a motion, I will make a motion. I'll make a motion and then we'll see if somebody second.
Go ahead.
I will make a motion, oh, let me call the language, I'm sorry. I will make a motion to amend the development of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six calendar. As follows, to remove Yom Kippur and Good Friday. From the calendar. And to have conversations with relevant contract, within relevant contract negotiations related to the Friday before Labor Day. And Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Just trying to capture this. And. So to remove those two holidays, to not add additional holidays.
Remove those two holidays, yeah, and then. Talk with groups about the other two, which again, I don't think we're going to have a decision on by the time we need the calendar. From that lens, for those other two, I think that just provides, if the collective bargaining groups are open to it, it just provides the district more flexibility.
Yeah.
Long-term, whether or not we keep them or remove them.
I also think that it really gives us an opportunity to collect data. On it. And kind of track it for the school year and see what makes sense.
So you just seconded the motion?
So yes, I seconded the motion along with.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't sure if I heard you say that or not. Okay. So there's a motion made and seconded. Is there any? Further discussion of this specific language? Before voting on it? In the background of the, of the motion, in the background of the motion. Is the, in the goal of collecting further data on student attendance and the commitment to building out.
Yep.
Yep. Includes a calendar.
The curriculum or framework, system for excuse absence, framework for learning about holidays.
It just feels like a lot of ifs. Do you know what I mean? Like, I just, it's. It's. It doesn't, like, it's, it's a decision, but with, I guess I'm trying to understand that piece of it. So it would be to remove them in order to see the impact of those days removed on me?
I think we could do that. I mean, I'm, I'm proposing we remove them in order to create the equity across the three Abrahamic religions. I think as a school committee next year, we could look at from an attendance lens as to, right, the concern Val brought up, right, if there somehow is some unknown impact of us doing this, right? These are days people have just, we have no data, we've never had data on it, it's been off forever. So like, it's possible, we're making a really bad decision from just a like student learning and again, operational standpoint. But I, I personally don't think like that data is going to give us more insight into like the equity element of this, of like, what, what decision do we want to make to better reflect like the cultural diversity, right? Is it to add more or remove more? And again, my motion is to, to remove them, to create that consistency and try and acknowledge it in another way. I think the if is all the curriculum stuff, but I think that's an if. If we add them or remove them, either way, like, again, they're not going to learn it just by not being in school. We need, we need that regardless of the direction.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other last comments?
I think it also gives us an opportunity when you look at like, you know, time on learning and you see what the data is across, like, in addition to religious holidays, but any other days, we can kind of figure out, you know, and have that data point to make decisions going into next year's calendar. So, but without kind of removing everything and starting from scratch, it's hard to collect that, I think. We might not have as many days off, people who take Good Friday off, you know? And without having it be an in-school day, it's hard to tell.
From an equity lens, this one doesn't work for me, but I'll vote accordingly. Also.
Well, I just, again, I go back to my initial point, right? We're removing something. Again, I can't help but think about sort of what came before. And that's fine, that's fine. I mean, if that's the way we go, but I just can't support it.
Okay. So. The motion's been made and seconded, so are we ready to vote on it?
Yes.
It's a recommendation, it's not, you know? We'll all be voting on the calendar, too, so. If anybody feels ambivalent about this, you know, you're, this isn't your last chance to vote on this. All right. Our motion's made and seconded, is all in favor? Opposed? So that's a recommendation for you. Thank you for sitting through this conversation. You know? And sorry, this is going to be our latest meeting of the year. Sorry about that. Thank you, everybody, for all your participation. And we will keep going and, you know, and keep working this out. But I, just again, thanks to every member of the community that took their time to weigh in to, whether they completed the survey, contacted us some other way, attended a listening session. That was meaningful and important. So thank you. I don't have anything else under chair report. So I'm gonna quick move to the finance subcommittee report.
It'll be very quick. We, it's not, since this is the last budget discussion here, we, we did have a budget conversation. We talked a little bit more just about the proposed needs-based budget. Nothing really significant to report on that. We also had further conversations about the fee schedule. You see here, the proposed fees, we are not voting on those tonight. But that's just a conversation, we started to look at the student fees and what those, where we might make changes for FY twenty-six. We do have two vendor warrants to approve, which I shared out previously. And so I will make motion to approve vendor warrant twenty-two in the amount of seven hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-three cents, payable on twelve, twelve, twenty-four, as well as vendor warrant twenty-three in the amount of five hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred sixty dollars and sixty-one cents, payable on twelve, nineteen, twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor? That's it for finance report.
Thanks. So the fees, that, will that come back in January?
I don't know, we, we still have to discuss, I don't know if we'll vote on it in January. There's competing interest of like, we got to talk budget and then we also talk fees. Fees might get pushed.
Thanks. Okay, policy.
Okay, we met, sorry, I dropped my notes. We met yesterday for policy. We went through sections J, K, and L. There is in your folder, you will see a kind of outline of each, each of the sections with the changes that were recommended. Some is for language, some are, you know, some we don't need anymore, some are old NASDAQ policies, which we used to have before MASC. There is like, for instance, like you can look at JIB student involvement and decision-making, which we discussed yesterday with, we're updating it to reflect the current law. But we're also simplifying it not to include the final paragraph. As that is MPS policy, that's JIBB. We are also, and we can, I, I just want to say, because section J is really long, we can either just take section J tonight and bring back K and L at our next meeting in January. Or if you, if you guys want to do, this is, there's no vote tonight, it's just a first reading of these policies. And then, you know, as Glenn is always so thoughtful to create, create kind of an overview for us for each of the sections, he took us through each policy and kind of, most of it's like language, some of them are specific to, to Milton, which we would keep, some of them, we are adopting MASC for better language and so on and so forth. So that was our meeting yesterday. And going from JKL will take us through all of our policies. And now we can go back and kind of pick certain ones and discuss them further and so on and so forth.
It's amazing how many old policies there are. It's like really surprising.
Yep. So it's really just been the process of cleaning up these policies and just getting rid of ones. And then obviously we can tackle, take deep dives into.
I can't remember the first reading, do you need to say the names of all the policies? Or is this good enough for a first reading? You said, you said.
You want me to say it?
Well, no, you just said that, like, do we only take one or the others? I mean, my thought is to have.
I was just trying to be sensitive to you guys because it's a long meeting. So I don't know if you want to like skip through all of it, read through all of it.
And y'all did the work and.
I can pull up the motion.
But this is, this does conclude the
Yes.
full review of the whole policy book.
Yes.
So these are the final three sections.
There's no motion, so.
Yep. Yeah, that's, it's true, we don't need a vote here. It is first reading, which is a chance to ask questions or clarify for understanding. And then next meeting is another chance to discuss, but then to take a vote next meeting on these recommendations.
Thank you all for your work on it. Thanks, Glenn, nobody's watching.
Yes, he's watching our meetings.
Even though he told me he does not.
I know, I'm hoping he does.
So anybody else, anyone, any discussion under any of these? Okay, are we deciding to move, so we're moving forward? This is the first reading of those three sections. And next meeting will be the second reading on those three sections.
And so everybody's good with combining all of them.
Okay. So, facilities.
Yes, so we had a couple of meetings because we were, I wasn't able to give you guys an update at our last meeting. So it's, it's really just been general housekeeping. At our November meeting, we had, you know, just got an update from Tom McCarthy, our consolidated facilities director. He kind of created his capital request list that he ran by the town administrator. And we kind of prioritized what that would be like for the next five years, so year one, year two, and so on and so forth. So, you know, they, things like the Tucker generator, which would be a priority because there are a lot of power outages in that area. And then would also look at, like, you know, aiming to replace the Pierce generator. And, and in addition, like, we also looked at, like, you know, putting in money towards having kind of look at the overall like maintenance of all our equipment and just kind of figuring out like, when do things need to be replaced and kind of prioritizing it that way. That was something. And then also making the list more general so that as needs arise, if something breaks, we can put money towards that and just kind of prioritizing it that way. So just trying to streamline. I think if, you know, if one of the comments was if, you know, funding was limited that we get from capital, we would prioritize the Tucker generator and the LED lights for the fields because I guess during the games, the lights go out. So it's, it's tough to. Play in the dark, yes, exactly. And then one of the things that came up in our conversation was outdoor learning and open space improvement. So we had one member, Matt Morong, who kind of took the lead on it, met with, you know, community members, tried to figure out like, what can we do to make improvements? What was like kind of our overall vision in terms of those spaces and making improvements so that they can, you know, playground equipment can be replaced? And as well as like, hey, how can they, you know, function as like, for instance, like, there's this outdoor garden at Pierce. That's kind of just, it was, it was used at, at, at one point as an outdoor classroom, but then it's kind of the, once the teacher who kind of started it was no longer there, that it just kind of went into, it's been kind of abandoned. So it's like, like, you know, how do we, how do we fix some of those things and create opportunities for students to have more space? So that's something that is kind of being pushed through our committee. And then I'm going to get, kind of get into what we discussed on Monday, which was, we had this committee that's been around for a very, very long time, facilities and bed members who've been on for a very long time, but we don't really, it's, it is a school committee advisory committee. We kind of had discussion, initial discussions on membership and, you know, creating some sort of policy maybe around it. So we had some recommendations from the committee in terms of like, what type of members would you like to be part of this committee? And then kind of bring suggestions, are there term limits, like, you know, what are, like, what would the task of, is there like an annual goal for the facilities advisory committee? Or do we just kind of look at what the consolidated facilities director puts forth and we kind of vote on things? Or do we have, you know, we took on the third and fourth floor of Cunningham Collycutt last year as like, that was our role last year. And we kind of, you know, got it to a point where it got voted out of our committee and is now with capital. So I think so if we were to come up with something each year, you know, so we discuss things like that. And then, so I have some data, and, you know, Peter mentioned that we, that can be brought to our governance so where we can talk about our advisory committee. I think it's our one and only advisory committee now. So it's like, how do we go about appointing members or reappoint, reaffirming members? And so on and so forth, because right now we don't really have any process that we follow for that. So just kind of, yeah, so that was mainly our discussion. There was a possibility of doing a site visit at the end of last month, but unfortunately it was tabled. So hoping to have that in the new year, looking at all six schools and the outdoor spaces and seeing what we could do and coming up with a vision for that, so.
Was there anything else under school building committee that we need to circle back on?
No, everything we covered already.
Okay.
It's your turn.
All right, so we have one set of minutes to approve, and that's for December, December fourth, sorry, wait. I just have them, December fourth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December fourth, twenty twenty-four, school committee.
I'll second the motion. Did anyone have edits or changes to the minutes? Okay, so Val, you were not at that meeting.
So I abstained.
So all in favor of approving the minutes? Yep. Okay, so that's five in favor. Abstaining?
Yeah.
Val was abstaining? All right, so next meeting agenda items, you just referenced governance. And I just want to say, we had, had a kind of a hold on January sixth for a governance, a winter governance meeting. Given how our fall one kind of had gotten pushed and we only met in late November, and given where we are right now, heading into winter break and having another meeting on January eighth, our next meeting on January eighth, I would like to propose that we postpone governance. And I was trying, I'm going to follow up offline about that. I'm looking at a date in February, a week in February, that's like on a week we don't meet. So the second week of February. I was tentatively, yeah, the tenth, February tenth. I don't need you to tell me right now if that's possible for you, but I will follow up with an email. And if that does happen to work, that would be the, the next choice. So that means our next meeting is going to be January eighth, regular school committee meeting. And so far, we have, I believe we'll have Collycutt Site Council presentation. We'll have the superintendent's mid-year evaluation check-in. We'll have finance, I'm assuming, and policy, we'll have a second reading of the many policies that we just looked at.
JKL.
We'll have a student rep report. Because you're going to be meeting with the student reps later this week. As I mentioned, I, the capital does meet tomorrow. I don't, you know, if there's anything substantial to report back, I can bring that. Will facilities be meeting? Will facilities be meeting again before? January eighth? Okay. So that list of things might be most of our items. So is, at this point, we can just, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Val seconds, okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you, everybody.